Okay, good evening. Sorry, we're starting a few minutes late. Welcome. I'm gonna call the Newington Board of Education meeting to order. Tonight is Wednesday, May 10th, 2017. The time is 7:02 PM. If we could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have a wonderful start to our meeting. Sorry it was taking me so long. We have so many awards tonight. We've really never had this many, all in one evening. So we're just trying to make sure that we're organized up here. So first, we have a resolution honoring our Newington teachers. And I believe we have the NTA Vice President. Holly, if she would like to come up and help me? I'm gonna read the resolution honoring all these wonderful teachers. So Resolution Honoring Newington Teachers, May 2nd, 2017. Whereas Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, has been proclaimed as Newington Teacher Appreciation Day. And whereas the Newington Public School System is committed to honoring its teachers and recognizing their contributions to the education system. And whereas the Newington Public School Teachers are well-qualified, very dedicated, and responsible for shaping the minds of future citizens. And whereas the Newington Public School Teachers provide educational opportunities that help prepare the students for the demands of the changing workplace and environment. And whereas the Newington Public School Teachers help students understand the democratic principles that built this nation, and how those foundations of freedom are serving as hope for people around the world. And whereas the commitment of the Newington Public School Teachers to providing the best education possible for their students is exemplary. And it is a desire of the Board of Education that teachers should be made aware of this appreciation. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 2nd, as Newington Teacher Appreciation Day. Be it resolved that we urge all the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington teachers who represent an investment in excellence in our community. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy to the President of the Newington Teachers Association. So just on behalf of the teachers of Newington Public Schools, we just wanna say that in all the past years, and this year especially, we certainly appreciate the work that you do in advocating for the students of Newington. And so, on behalf of all the teachers, we thank you for that, and we appreciate it. I'm pleased to be joined by many of my colleagues throughout the district. And I just wanna make note that there is at least one teacher up here that I had as a student. And it's so exciting to see them return back to Newington to continue their good work.
Thank you.
Other board member comment?
Emily. Surprise, surprise. I wanna say thank you. I have two kids in the system right now, and they learn so much every day. And I was actually just saying in our curriculum meeting, I'm amazed when they have questions with their homework and they email their teachers. And I yell at them, saying, "It's nighttime! Stop bothering your teachers!" So often, they get a response pretty quickly, so that your dedication is noticed and appreciated tremendously. I know that my kids wouldn't be where they are without great people like you, so thank you.
Every day is Teacher Appreciation Day. We appreciate you every day, as a parent and as a Board of Ed member, so thank you.
I wonder if it works if I... Sure. Thank you for everything. I was raised by a teacher. I have a lot of friends who are now teachers. I could not be a teacher. One of your family members was one of my favorite teachers in high school. We tried to give him Teacher of the Year, but they wouldn't let us. And then I think he did the next year. And the impact that you have on kids and their families and their lives are incredible. And you all know that because you chose the profession. And so, thank you. We continue to make it harder and put more on you, and you continue to amaze with what you can do. So, thank you very much for everything, day in, day out.
So in case you'll ever forget, just know that from parents and grandparents, that every day you make a difference in kids' lives. Every single day, all of you. And from the small things to the big things. And we thank you from the bottom of our hearts, every single teacher in Newington, and all the towns, but for sure, you all. Thank you.
Any other board member comment?
Thank you so much. Testing. Hello? I'll just be loud. The next resolution we have is honoring our tutors, assistants... Which was the day, May 2nd also? It was on May 2nd. So coming up is Marilena Giulioso, Director of Students Services, and Bruce Fletcher, Tutor at NHS. Yeah, here it is. Whereas Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, has been proclaimed as Newington Tutor-Assisters Appreciation Day. And whereas the Newington Public School System is committed to honoring its tutor-assistors and recognizing their contributions to the educational system. And whereas the Newington Public School Tutors-Assisters are well-qualified, very dedicated, and maintain a close working relationship with students, school staff, and parents. And whereas the Newington Public School Tutors-Assisters and learning tutors provide assistance, direction, and guidance to students under the direction of special education and regular education teachers. And whereas the Newington Public School Tutors-Assisters reinforce skills, assist students in completing work using the computer, organizing, and assisting with physical management and personal care. And whereas the Newington Public School Tutors-Assisters contribute to the success of the entire school system and are always willing to go above and beyond their duties. True all that, because I have been a parent who has needed assistance, and you guys are amazing. So therefore, we do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017, as Newington Tutor-Assister Appreciation Day. Be it resolved that we urge all of the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to Newington tutors and sisters who represent an investment in excellence in our community. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. He's not here, but he's gonna do it. So I hand this to you. Thank you so much for everything that you all do, every day, day in and day out, above and beyond, it's so true. So, who else would like to say something? Okay, just go ahead.
So I have a couple things. One, I worked as a tutor for a short time at Anna Reynolds in the preschool program, so I have a kind of a sense of, at least, some of what happens. And then I've also just been in the schools. You're like a small army of people that are in every... They're all over the school, in many classrooms, doing all kinds of different things, working with different students. And the experiences I've had, I have a friend, Ryan Alexander. Probably everyone here knows who he is. He's like the mayor of the town. He's had a lot of people working with him. And every time if I pick him up from school, there's, you know, his one-on-one is there. And the people that I've just come in contact through him alone, it's been amazing. So you guys do tremendous work. And I appreciate the attention that you give our students, and really the heart that you put into the work that you do, and how much you really care about the students. So, thank you.
Just say thank you. I was awes... I didn't realize you were a tutor too. I was a tutor in Bloomfield when I was out of college, in between college and law school. And that was an incredible experience to work one-on-one with a couple of students, do some homebound tutoring, SRBI work. And it's appropriate that teachers are in the room right now and we're recognizing you on the same day because classrooms don't function without a whole lot of people. And tutors are one big part of that. And I think everyone here acknowledges that. And it's, you know, a lot of times classroom teachers get a lot of the credit and the blame. And there's a lot of credit to go around to everyone else who's involved in the students' lives, and that falls directly on tutors. Without you, we can't effectively teach the rest of the class a lot of the times. And it's really important work. Thank you very much for all you do, and continue on doing it.
So I'd like to thank you for allowing so many students to have that aha moment, one-on-one, that you make happen. It's magic, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
I would like to thank Bruce for being here to represent. Bruce is one of our longstanding tutors. He has had a couple of different positions throughout the district, and really does exemplify the tutors that we have here. So, thank you for being here to present us on behalf. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, I'm going to present the Resolution Honoring Nurses. And with us, we have our Nursing Administrator, Mercy Hetherington, and Joanne Moreno. There's two other names on there. I haven't had the pleasure yet to meet. Resolution Honoring School Nurses, May 10th, 2017. Whereas Wednesday, May 10th, 2017, has been proclaimed as Newington School Nurses Day. And whereas Newington School Nurses help to foster a healthy, nurturing community in which our children can learn and grow. And whereas Newington School Nurses are the first, and sometimes the only, line of defense against the illnesses and conditions our students face, making their contribution to the education and welfare of the student population invaluable. And whereas Newington School Nurses, by nature of their profession, are called upon to take on roles beyond that of health provider, acting as teacher, confidant, mentor, and friend to the students of Newington. And whereas Newington School Nurses are dedicated to the success and wellness of Newington's future generations. Therefore, we do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 10th, 2017, as Newington School Nurses Day. Be it resolved that we urge all the citizens of our community to join with us in actively expressing gratitude to all Newington School Nurses. Be it further resolved that the Secretary of the Newington Board of Education is directed to spread this resolution upon the minutes of this meeting and to provide a suitable copy for presentation. And I will just start by thanking you. I'm married to a nurse, not a school nurse, but I can see more now how involved you are in schools. And we get reports on the amount of kids coming into office and the different types of things you do in this environment where there are so many more kids with needs, including very serious needs. All sorts of medications, all day long. It's incredibly vital to our community. And like I said about the tutors a few minutes earlier, there's a whole lot that goes into having an effective classroom. It's one thing having kids who are healthy, feeling good, getting the medication they may need during the day, knowing there's someone they can talk to if something doesn't feel right, and all the things that go on K to 12. So thank you very much for your work. Further, board, Jane?
When I first got on the board, that's one of the first things that surprised me was how busy you really are. Because we had gotten reports. And the high mileage, high mileage. And if you really do think about it, your job is getting harder and harder every day, every year, because we're seeing a lot more high-needs kids who need help and assistance throughout the day. It's just not the little kid going, "I have a tummy ache. I wanna go home." You have a lot of, you know, intense things that you need to do. And I'm very impressed. I personally could not do it. So, thank you very, very much.
You guys are the people that are... You're one of those consistent people for the kids in school. So in elementary school, they see you from, you know, preschool through 4th grade. And then, you know, at every... Each school, there's one school nurse. So you're one of those people that they will see throughout their time. So they have a connection to you. And I know that kids come in when they are sick, when they just need a little something extra, when they're actually sick, when they have injuries sometimes. Or, you know, there's lots of different reasons that they come and see you outside of the everyday things, needs that they have. So, thank you for all that you do and the extra care that you put into making them feel safe and comfortable with you, because that makes a big difference for them. So, appreciate all that you do. Thank you.
First, I wanna... Joanne, can you hear me now? Got it. I usually have a loud enough voice. One of our nurses didn't make it. When I went to visit her today, she sounded so horrible. I told her she was not allowed to come and infect all of you. So, you're welcome. But I do wanna thank the Board of Ed for your continued support. Especially, I wanna thank... A special thanks to Steve, and Wendy, and Lou, and Dr. Collins, who have to hear me go on and on. And they listen very patiently, so thank you for that. And for addressing our needs, as you all very well stated, that are definitely increasing both physical and mental needs here at all levels of the school. So, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, next we have some CAPE Student Leadership Awards. And I can't see, but I don't think we have the representative from CAPE. Or do we? Can you go... Would you like to go grab them? And I know there's other students in the hallway too. Okay. So come on up here, and then I'm gonna read this. Okay, so, we have six Newington Public School students who have been selected to receive the annual CAPE Student Leadership Award. These students were chosen from among their peers for exhibiting distinguished leadership in school activities and daily life. The criteria for this award is based on leadership skills, which include willingness to take on challenges, capacity to make difficult decisions, concern for others, the ability to work with others, willingness to commit time to a project, diplomacy, and ability to understand issues clearly, and ability to honor a commitment. So, we wanted to recognize these students. And I believe we have two students who are in Washington DC. I'm sorry? Oh, I thought they were here. Okay, wonderful. Okay. We have two students who aren't here. They're in Washington DC. But we have four students with us. So if we can have Sam Coltrera, Natalia Abdu, and we already have Austin and Emily, right? Okay. And I'm gonna turn it over to our CAPE representative. I'm so sorry.
I'm just here to represent my daughter, who is in Washington DC right now. That is Danielle.
Oh, okay. Everybody, we are all mixed up tonight. I apologize. Wonderful, thank you for coming. Okay. So the only one we're missing is Eli Roberts. Okay, all right. Now it makes sense. I was afraid we had Decca up here. I was all confused. Okay, all right. All right, so. And we don't have Danielle's award with us? Because we thought she was in Washington. Yes, okay. So. Congratulations. Okay. Natalia, I thought was here. I don't see her. She was here. Austin. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And we have your daughter's report.
Debbie's gonna win.
She's gonna go. Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Would any of you guys say something?
Sure.
You're good?
If we talk for college, they say, "No." I have nothing to say.
And Natalia, okay. We're looking for you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Your award. You know, I'm just gonna repeat, because a couple of people... We were a little mixed up, and a couple of people, like Natalia's parents, weren't here. And we weren't sure that... We didn't know you were Danielle's mom. So, again, this award is being given for a couple of different reasons. From CAPE, these are Student Leadership Awards for willingness to take on challenges, for the capacity to make difficult decisions, concern for others, ability to work with others, willingness to commit time to a project, diplomacy, ability to understand issues clearly, and the ability to honor a commitment. So, once again, we thank you, and we honor you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Now, Decca. Okay, and next we have some Decca awards. And we have some of our students who have... Some distinguished students who have just won some great awards. And is Mrs. Miller still here? Where is she? Oh, okay, good. She can come up here. Mrs. Dennis. You could explain better. All the wonderful accomplishments. Both of you, come on up.
So first of all, I do wanna acknowledge Allison Madrazo, who couldn't be here tonight, that also was a part of our ICDC group, as well as Monica Sedill, who was eligible to go, but was unable to because of all of her AP exams. So, what Decca stands for is it doesn't really stand for anything anymore. It doesn't... The acronym anymore? No, it doesn't anymore. So, because they've extended this... It used to just be focused on marketing, but it's a business organization focused on finance, entrepreneurship, and everything else. So, we provide a lot of business opportunities for these students to put themselves out there among running the school store. And the biggest keystone of the organization is really to compete at the state. So, all of these people qualified not only at the state, so they were in the top... They were the top finalists for the state, but then they also went on to represent us at Nationals. And this year, that was in Anaheim. So, would you like to present?
Go ahead.
So, the students that actually received over an 80% score of proficiency at the national level received an award of excellence. So, this is a huge honor for them to be able to get, especially because the judges there are just that much harder. So, I will give these out to those people, and you can see the wonderful awards that they all received at the state as well. This is for Martha. Hero. Matthew. Matthew was also our very first finalist for Newington ever. He took... He was a finalist for his role play sport. So, and he'll share a little bit about that. John. Danielle. And Patrick. And they were asked to share a little bit about their experience.
Just, the microphone's not working well, so just talk loudly.
My name is Austin Sargent, and I worked with Lucas Hoole and Allison Madrazo on our chapter's first community service project. And going into it, we weren't really sure what the project entailed, because it had such a great magnitude. And going into competition day, we had prepared countless hours on this. And we found tremendous success with our judge. He was able to connect with our project. And we wound up placing first in the state competition. So going into the international competition, we had a lot of confidence. We thought that we were gonna be able to place. But we had a much more difficult judge. And we were devastated when we didn't wind up placing. But we learned the lesson that what one person likes, in the business world especially, isn't what another person's gonna like. So, we were able to deal with this. And also, this was my first year in Decca as a senior. So I just, like, wanted to thank Mrs. Miller for giving me some incredible opportunities to go to Boston, compete, and to California. So I just wanted to say thank you.
I'm Danielle. I'm a senior, and this is my first year in Decca as well. And I competed in the travel and tourism partner role play with Patrick. Being someone who is type A and can spend hours doing my homework and studying, I was very surprised to find myself competing in this category where I had 30 minutes to prepare and didn't know what I was talking about sometimes. But what I learned from Mrs. Miller with my preparation and my practice is that sometimes it's okay to take chances and to trust your gut. And I learned that sometimes it's better to let Patrick talk while I listen. So, I would like to thank Mrs. Miller for all the opportunities and everything that she's done for me. And I would also love to thank Patrick for always finishing my...
Sentences. So, yeah, as being in the team role play with Danielle was a very valuable experience for me too, because like Danielle said, we were only given 30 minutes to prepare. And we kinda had to... We didn't always agree on what the best way was to make a social media price drop strategy. And no, we still don't know what that is either. So, we really had to think on our feet and just trust our gut. Being people who haven't really, like, taken business classes before, we were thrown into this event, and we were really happy to succeed so well at states. And it just taught me that the value of teamwork and trusting in my partner, that she would deliver, and she did. And then that she trusted me, that I knew somewhat what I was talking about. And, yeah, it was just a great experience. I was really happy that I had the experience to think on my feet so quickly too.
My name is Ira Demionova, and this is my second year in Decca. Actually, my partner Martha and I made finals international last year, and we went to Nashville. And we competed in Innovation Plan category. And I just really think Decca is an exceptional organization, because I don't think any other club or activity in our school incorporates our knowledge in our classes as much as Decca does. Like, for example, last year, when Martha and I competed, we had a women's-only fitness studio project. At that time, Martha was taking entrepreneurship, so she did most of the paperwork that we had. But together, we combined forces to present. This year, we kinda swapped roles. I took entrepreneurship with Miss Miller. And it was just a blessing, because it furthered my understanding of the category that I'm competing in, how I'm supposed to write the paper, and how I'm supposed to present. So, just thank you, Miss Miller, for the opportunities. And...
Hi, I'm Martha Krachinski, and I was fortunate enough to go and compete internationally twice, once last year in Nashville and once this year in Anaheim. And I'd like to thank Decca for a lot. Before I joined Decca, I was really shy, and I never got in my comfort zone. But once we got to Nashville, I knew that I had to have had something in order to get this far. So once we got into a room with the judge, I just started to present with passion. And then this year, when we got in again, I knew that, like, it was my thing. And then this year, when we got in again, I knew that like it was my thing, so I just got, was able to get out of my comfort zone, not only in DECA, but even in front of people, in front of my class, and even at this presentation right now. And thank you, Ms. Miller, too.
Thank you. My name's John Flavkan. I'm a senior, and it's also my first year at DECA. Preparing for states, Ms. Miller's always there for us, as early as 6:00 AM after school. She always gave us tests, and whenever we're at extra time, it was for the role plays. Going into states, however, I didn't realize how much I really wanted to win until they were calling names out. Mine was the last of the six, so it was the most stressful moment of my life, but I went up there, I got first, and was able to go out to California. Out there, it, it's a shell shock. There's 18,000 kids just as hungry as you to win, and they're all fighting you to take your spot. I think the most important thing that I've gotten from this experience is the importance of work ethic, how in college, in the job force, there's always going to be people coming for your spot, and if you truly want something, you have to work for it, and you have to fight for it. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
So my name's Matt Cassone, and I would just like to thank Ms. Miller for allowing me to compete in DECA. She was the one to actually convince me to do a role play in automotive. Knowing that I have a very good background in automotive, my father is a mechanic, so it was very helpful. Now, going to the state, I did come in third. I was surprised. Honestly, from the beginning, I said, I put it in my mind, I didn't say, "I hope I go to California." I said, "I am going to California." So I believe it's on the mind, if you want to do something, you could do it. Now it was, I didn't come first, but I did get third, and I did go to Anaheim, and I did compete. Now I'd just like to point this out, I did bring home a finalist medal. I would just like to say, thank you for her, because she did help me on a lot of things. And I learned by being unique, because being unique is very special in the role play, because everyone does the same exact thing. You walk in, you shake the judge's hand, and you smile. See, I learned, so I'm just going to point this out real quick. So the judges are behind me, and you're not supposed to like look at them, so I had to jazz it up a little. So I did a quick little turn, and I did like a quick like hop. I just had to make it special because I knew that I had to step out of my box and make sure that I stood out between the thousands and hundreds of kids that were competing against me. And also, I'd just like to say that I wasn't in the bathroom this time. So thank you.
I guess I have to follow that. Well, I want to start by kind of just touching up like, so like me and Austin and Allison did our community service event, and we actually found out that our stuff that we, you know, the things that we gathered did get there. And I want to start by passing them over here to Ms. Pat Tronio, because the picture is of her daughter's letter.
Oh.
So I thought that that was pretty good.
Oh, that's very neat.
That was one of the two pictures we got.
Oh my gosh.
And I also want to touch on like how important it is being the only junior here that has gone, I mean, not like the only one that has gone, but of this year that is, I went to Nationals, I'm fortunate enough to, I'm going to be in DECA again next year. Hopefully, you know, I can use the skills that I've learned there, the countless, maybe not hours, but maybe hours of preparation that I did with Mrs. Miller before school, after school, sometimes during school. The, the work that just goes into doing something this big, I mean, is absolutely unquestionable. You know, role plays, you guys are prepping constantly. Group events, you guys are prepping constantly. I mean, this, the, the work is, is so, is so great. So I'm just, I'm so proud of all of us for getting where we were, even if maybe we didn't do so well at finals, but we did really good at states and we placed first. So that, that's what matters. So, so thank you, Ms. Miller, for giving us the opportunity. Thank you, Ms. Dennis, for coming and watching over us. I hope you're okay.
So I would just like to say, I mean, as I'm sure you can all see, I mean, I'm so impressed with all of these kids. I mean, they've done an amazing job. They were a fantastic group when we were on this trip. They all worked really, really hard. And Ally Miller does a fantastic job. And I'm new to the school system this year. I came from a business background, and I love that I have, Ally's given me the privilege of coming in and helping in her classroom here and there, and I absolutely love it. I love working with the kids, and I'm so impressed by all they're doing. So, you know, congratulations to all of you and to Mrs. Miller.
As like a group and from all the families that, like for part of this, we'd just like to thank you, these gifts.
These kids challenge me in so many ways. Patience is one of them. But honestly, they, they make me try harder to even be, you know, a better teacher, better for them, which only makes me challenge them more, which I'm sure they love. But congratulations to all of you guys. You guys, it was a great trip and lots of memories.
Thank you. Any board comments? Mr. Shulman.
Before you guys head out and finish your homework, and/or ask your parents for ice cream, and for the students who got, who are never too old for ice cream. And for the students who got the Cabe recognition too, for those of you who are still here, congratulations on your accomplishment. The work that you've done is clearly impressive, and you've impressed a lot of people and done a lot of hard work and put a lot into it. What I've said for a few years in these situations is that this is not just an okay, you're done now. This is a challenge to do something even better next year. For those of you graduating, to make an impact in your next community outside of Newington, to continue on this path, because now you've been selected as people who can do this. So there's an expectation now from the rest of us that you're going to continue to and going to continue to impress and put Newington on the map. All right? Congratulations, everyone.
Dr. Braverman?
I just, I've been a DECA judge probably for the past 15 years. I just missed this last one, so sorry I couldn't judge you. But I know that you have 30 minutes to prepare to present at the AquaTurf. You're, what, on a, on a scenario, you have no idea what it's going to be after taking a test all morning. It's a very grueling day, and your skill level, the appearance, I know how you judge as a judge, and I want to congratulate you all for coming, rising to the top. It's great, great for Newington and great for you all, so congratulations.
I have to say something too, of course. I did not have any idea what DECA was until kind of recently, and all of a sudden, every time we get an update, it's like, oh, DECA did this, oh, DECA's competing here, oh, they placed here. And I was like, what, oh my, what is going on over there? And I'm so glad that you're here, so that I could hear kind of a little bit about what you guys have done and the things that you've learned. I loved when you said, I don't even remember who said it, that you didn't do, maybe you said it awesome, where you didn't do that well, but you learned from it? That is all we want to hear. You learned from what you did, that's amazing. So I'm really impressed with all of you. I hope that you are super proud of your accomplishments. And yeah, this is like the first step. You guys are way ahead of so many people right now. Just keep going, because you are on an awesome trajectory. So congratulations. I am super proud of you, as all of Newington should be, and I hope that you are even more proud of yourself. So congratulations.
Well, there's nothing more I can say. You are all amazing, so I just want to say thank you for being awesome role models for the younger students. Now, I have three younger kids. I have, my oldest is a freshman. You are amazing role models, all the students here, the Cabe Awards students. You're all amazing. You impress me every day, and no, thank you for, for being that great role model. I really appreciate it, so thank you.
I just have one thing to say. I want to thank Mrs. Miller for fulfilling a dream of mine for the last 30 or so years. I tried to get an active DECA chapter started at Newington High School in the early 80s. It takes, it took me a little while. But I wasn't always a superintendent, you may not believe that, but at one point I was a teacher and I was a DECA advisor. So I know what Mrs. Miller is feeling right now, so I'm very proud of you. I know the excitement of what it's like to stand in front of 18,000 kids. As a matter of fact, I was showing Mrs. Miller my Anaheim folder. Yes. I'm really old, but I want to thank you guys, I'm really proud of you. Did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being here tonight. We appreciate it. And we have one more set of awards, and if we could ask Lucas Hool and Jeremy Ripple to join us up front. We have two wonderful student representatives who come to our board meetings and give us these lovely updates, and I have to say, I'm going to speak for everybody, it's definitely our most enjoyable time of, of the board meetings. We love having you here, and you do a wonderful job with your reports. I have to say, I'm so impressed with what you share. You share just enough, you keep us informed. It's fabulous. So I want to thank you very much, Lucas and Jeremy. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And board member comment? Sorry. Anybody else want to add? Go ahead, Emily.
Of course, I want to say thank you. I, yeah, you guys are a lot of fun. I appreciate your being here. I am not sure that I would have been as enthusiastic when I was your age to be here giving the reports, so I, I appreciate that tremendously, and the way that you are able to get the information from all of the schools to keep us, give us kind of an update on what's going on around the district has been really great. And of course, it's always fun to hear from young voices, so thank you.
And you do a great job representing every...
Everyone, yeah.
Everyone, which I love. I love hearing about the sports and the drama club and all the activities and...
Elementary schools, all of them.
All the academic stuff.
All the accomplishments.
Yeah, it's, you just do a wonderful job, so thank you.
My pleasure.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. We are at Agenda Item C, which is public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. As a reminder, our phone number is 860-665-8736. If anybody from the public would like to come forward, this is our first opportunity for public participation, and we'll have another opportunity at the end of the evening. Okay? All right. Okay, seeing nobody calling in and nobody from the public wishing to come forward, we are going to move to Agenda Item D, which is Standing Committee Information Items. We don't have any reports from finance facilities, student policy, curriculum, just met this evening. We can, we can report on that. Actually, Josh, why don't we go ahead? Why don't we give a report?
This was April, this was for the April 5th one.
Well, no.
We talked about school calendars.
No, Curriculum Committee.
Oh, Curriculum.
Curriculum Committee, yes, yes, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna have some comments at the end of the meeting, but we met about, firstly about the homework policy. It was kind of a hot topic at the beginning of the year. Our staff's kind of been taking a look at what our homework policy and regulation looks like, what it should look like, what, how it's implemented in the classroom, and kind of the feeling from that meeting is that, you know, the implementation of homework in the classroom should be to benefit our students and to have a real impact, and shouldn't be busy work, shouldn't take forever, and that, so one of the things that, that it seems like will be worked on is how homework is implemented in the classroom, so that it's a little more standardized, that most teachers are doing similar things, that it is meaningful work, and not just work for the sake of doing work, but that it actually has an impact. So we're going to be looping back around probably towards sometime next year about how the implementation's going, what the best practices are, looking at some more of the recent research on when homework's effective versus when it's not. Then we also had an important second part of the meeting about social workers, the need for social workers specifically in the middle levels. And then just generally as a whole, we had kind of an informational meeting about what our social workers do, and when we don't have social worker coverage in the schools, whose time is being taken up, and who are the kids and families who are slipping through the cracks, which is something we hear a lot, especially in transitions between the schools and from grade to grade and through adolescents. So that's a conversation that's going to be continuing in earnest for the next probably 12 to 18 months, until we can hopefully find a solution that will work for our school system, and we, and we'll go from there.
Thank you. The only other meeting that we have on the agenda to talk about was our Executive Committee meeting from April 5th, where I believe we discussed calendar options. Will you, go ahead.
Yeah, we talked about it last full board meeting, and we're taking action tonight.
Tonight, right, so we'll hear more about that later this evening, okay? And now, time for you to join us at the table again. It's our report from our student representatives.
So starting off this busy month at the high school, AP exams are well underway, I took one today, and are almost finished for most students, and unless, of course, you're me, who's taking the AP Chem retake on the 18th. This is the time to show what you know in some of the most rigorous courses that we offer at the high school. The stress is felt throughout the school, students spending late nights reviewing content, AP teachers reviewing as much as they possibly can. It's truly a special part of our year. However, the stress does not come out with some, or without some relief. The annual Scholars Breakfast is set for May 17th, a time to honor students that were able enough to achieve high honor status the first three quarters of the 2016-17 year. I've gone the past two years, so speaking from experience, it is a great family event where students can be recognized for our accomplishments. And obviously, the biggest event of the school year is coming up. Yes, it is prom season, or as most parents like to call it, hide your wallet season. I, after weeks of preparation and finally about 50% of the way there, it's on Friday, and I'm sure most people are in the same position. Student Council is gearing up for its annual elections. We have pretty contested campaigns for almost all of our positions, so we're excited for the outcome. And a new round of officers to continue the amazing work set by this year's hard-working batch. The way things are looking currently, it seems that I'm going to be the 2017-18 Student Council President, which is undoubtedly one of the greatest honors of my life, and I'm excited to take on a different role, but sad to leave the board. This position has taught me so much and made me aware of the town's happenings and whims of the student body. Trust me, there is no skill more valuable than empathy and awareness, so thank you for letting Jeremy and I here and accepting us with such open arms. It was truly a pleasure. With that, I would like to hand it over to Jeremy for the remainder of the report.
We switched things up a little bit. He went first, so I'm finishing. All right, so senior prom, that's coming up too, and I just can't believe, you know, how much time has flown by, you know, it just, it really does go like that. And I'm excited for prom, you know, because I'm really into dancing, you know, I can't wait to show off some of those moves, a little, hee hee, a little Michael Jackson, you know, little Jagger. The senior prom features a masquerade theme, and it will be taking place next Friday at the AquaTurf, and I'm sure it will be just as unforgettable as my junior prom. Moving on to sports, Tyler Savlik and Megan Andrews were recognized on Sunday at the AquaTurf for being CIAC Scholar Athletes from Newington High School. They were not only successful during athletics, but also in the classroom as well, and this event commemorated this. Boys volleyball also defeated Lewis Mills last week. I was there to personally witness the event, and I must say, our boys have some determination. The game went into the fifth set, and they were able to prevail and win. Girls golf defeated Middletown, and boys lacrosse also defeated Cromwell last week as well. This week, baseball beat Connerd, volleyball beat Maloney, girls lacrosse beat Bristol, and boys lacrosse defeated Windsor on their senior night. Without a doubt, Newington Athletics is performing very well this season. I look forward to another successful conclusion to a sports season in the coming weeks. At the Martin, at the, um, the middle schools, the spring is just as bright. At Martin Kellogg Middle School, Lindsay Forhour and Evan Acatino, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, were chosen as scholar leaders and will be recognized at the Annual Connecticut Association of Schools Scholar Leaders Banquet on Sunday, June 4th, at the AquaTurf. Mia Vendetti and Jordan Sturgakis were also chosen as scholar leaders from John Wallace and will be attending the same event. It looks like a lot of people are going to the AquaTurf over the next few weeks. Guess it's the place to go. The school year is finally winding down, and I have to say, I've never been more satisfied in my life. I greatly appreciate all the opportunities the town of Newington has given me, and I'm sure I'm going to be hitting the ground running this fall at Boston College. I would like to thank the board, thank you, for everything they've done, and I know they will continue to do what needs to be done to make sure the children of Newington have the best and brightest future possible. It's been a pleasure serving as a Senior Board of Ed rep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Jane? Well, you definitely do us proud, thank you. Where is the junior prom being held?
Going to be at the Hartford Convention Center this year.
Oh, okay.
I've never heard of it being there, so I'm, I'm interested to see.
Okay. I think last year, right?
Last time we were there, they had squared answers, so it might be after. That sounds...
That was the prom.
All right. I just want to, I just want to comment on something really quickly that Mr. Shulman brought up about homework. I would like to say that the math department, I think, Miss Smackey can really, they're really, really good about homework. They're all really on the same page, and they give like just the right amount of homework. Like I've never, I've never had like a problem with wanting to do my math homework. So I, I think that they, they're the example to follow, just as a student's perspective.
Is there a grade you're waiting from?
I don't, I don't have, I don't...
Not the worst at all, Miss Smackey. Not the worst at all. Right.
Dr. Braverman, or anybody else? Go ahead.
I just want to say to you two, wherever you are, you always have a welcome seat, an open seat at this table, and we want feedback from you, how well you were prepared and what goes on with you in college. We're very proud of your achievements. We'll see you at graduation.
Thank you.
Emily?
Yeah, I, I wasn't prepared for this. I didn't think this was going to be your last meeting, so good luck, have fun at BC, good luck being president next year. It's quite an honor, yeah. Way to go, both of you, way to go. I like to think that this was your, your stepping stone, your, what is that, the launching pad? Thank you for those two great accomplishments.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, you have definitely made this one of my most enjoyable years. And I'm sure you've got an exam coming up on the math area that you're trying to get a little bit of a...
It's on Monday, so... How close are you with Mrs. Demanual?
There's no pressure here, but Boston College is an excellent selection, and as Dr. Braverman has mentioned, I know that any future Board of Ed, and ours, would welcome you back and have your input and perspective. It was deeply appreciated during the year to get your input. I appreciate the off-the-record comments and, and feedback that you provided to give me insight of the students, and I wish you the best of luck until football season.
Thank you, guys, thank you. Okay, we are now on to Agenda Item E, Other Business Information Items, and number one in that category is a presentation, I believe, from Mr. Salerno, and it's an education technology update, and I'm assuming from the audience that you may have some helpers?
Absolutely. Absolutely, use my helpers. Come on up, helpers. If you thought last year's presentation was good and all the accomplishments we made last year, this year has been even a, a better year, a banner year also, and we're not going to stop. So I have some representatives across the district that are just a microcosm of the great things that we're going to, we continue to do across the district. I'm going to allow them to share their accomplishments. Of course, they're all overachievers, so they created a presentation with all this multimedia. I will share the link to the presentation with you, so you can walk, uh, watch it at your own leisure. So with this year, we, we tried to make a focus of trying to meet the needs of all of our students in terms of technology, finding out what is their calling. We prepare all our lessons and our curriculum, abiding by the SD standards, which is International Society for Technology and Education. And there's seven standards that include knowledge constructor, creative communicator, computational thinker, innovative designer, empowered learner, digital citizen, and global collaborator, excuse me. So all of our students are exposed to all of these standards. But what we really want to do is build their agency, make them self-motivated, take part in their own learning and discovery, and find their niche in terms of technology. So at the elementary school, I have Leah and Aiden, and I'll let them present first.
Hi. Hi, my name is Leah. I'm here to talk about what we have learned in our Cool Tech class this year. The units we have studied include digital citizenship, creative communicator, coding, global communicator, and our latest unit, we are being curators of knowledge. So in our digital citizenship, we made a digital safety presentation to teach third graders about Chromebook safety, responsibility, digital kindness, and great digital citizenship. In our creative communicator unit, we shared what we learned about the human body systems by creating a digital animation. We participated in this cool program called Hour of Code. We also attempted to create our own background with characters and using that background and creating our own game in the scratch. In our global communicator, we participated in a Google Hangout with another class in Wisconsin, and we had to think of questions to ask the other class to figure out where they were located. And in the beginning, we had no clue where they were located, and we figured out their location in four questions. They figured out ours in 23. This year, for the past few weeks, I welcomed kindergarteners into the digital world. Ms. Groza's class was so much fun to teach them how to use some awesome apps that I downloaded. This app helps them practice their reading and math skills. I also spent a few weeks of my mornings making the app, downloading it, and much, much more. Thank you for making it possible to go above our education standards. Um, well, in our school, we have been, uh, learning, well, we've been doing two certain things. One of them is called the Wonder League, and the second thing is Tech Talk. The Wonder League is a robotics team for elementary students working with Dash and Dot Robots. We worked in two teams to complete challenges using the Blockly Program, Programming App, and submit video recordings we created. We learned a lot about teamwork and rotated important roles to gain experience. The second thing, Tech Talk, in fourth grade Tech Spurts this year, we focused on creating Tech Show, Tech Talk. After learning new software applications such as virtual reality, 3D design, computer programming, and game-making apps, we produced four completely student-created shows in which we debated two similar apps or robots. After participating in these two enrichment groups, I would love to do more learning about robotics, computer programming, and computer programming in the future.
Thank you. As for our middle school, we have Andrew, Alina, Christine, and Diana.
Hello, I'm Andrew Schilling, and at JWTV every morning for our morning announcements, we live stream it on YouTube. We use an encoder called open broadcasting software, where basically what you can do is you can set up different tabs that have different pictures and other sources of media attached to them that you could pull up on your stream, so it makes it very easy to stream. We have a green screen where we put our newscasters in front of. They sit on, they sit on chairs, and we put a news set where the green screen is, so it looks like they're on an actual news set. And we have like, we have a set and we use, we use a camera. And sometimes we have technical problems, sometimes OBS won't work or the computer won't come up. Our computer has two monitors, one for looking at OBS and one for looking at the internet on Chrome where we're streaming to see the status of our stream, and when that doesn't come up, we usually use the intercom to do the morning announcements.
So for Martin Kellogg, it's me and Alina, Christine. And for Martin Kellogg, we have news and announcements. And we put students in front of a green screen and we videotape, we, this is all live, and we presented to the whole school in the beginning. We have a tech help desk. It is run by students. And if you have trouble with your computer, you come to the students and the students help you out. In the seventh grade technology classes, we have so far made three projects. For the first one, we did a movie trailer, and it was our first project in seventh grade that we did. So we didn't really know exactly what to do. It was the, like, trial and error. But we all figured it out somehow and it all turned out really well. And the one that we did was by, we present, or we're going to be presenting is by Alina, and it's the first video. And then the second one is the PSA, and we all got to choose.
Alright, so since mine's a movie trailer, we used Adobe Premiere Elements, which is a movie editing app. And Ms. Baylock, our technology teacher, allowed us to use royalty-free media, which is media that you won't get copyrighted for, which she provided sites for. And we also did voiceovers, and we included like transitions that the app allowed us to. So Ms. Baylock helped us a lot with it, but she wanted us to learn on our own, so that's what we did. And our class did very well. She said that we did better than she expected us to, so that's our routine.
So I did the PSA, and for the PSA, all the students got to choose a topic that they wanted to do a PSA about. I did cyberbullying, and so we all chose different clips, and this was more of a, like, we are on our own and we try, and Ms. Baylock, our technology teacher, is just going to be there supervising if we have any questions. We all did a voiceover, put it in the video, and we all clipped it together on Adobe Premiere. And we, like, we did it and it turned, all of ours turned out really great. And it wa, it was like, it, and we kind of learned from our mistakes. And we, like, continued making all the videos better. And then the stop motion.
So stop motion was our last and final project of the whole cycle. And stop, we did, this is the first time we've ever done stop motions. And as said before, she expected us to do, we, we did better than she expected, way better than she expected. And we used Adobe Premiere Elements too. And what we did was, we used cameras and tripods to leave it in a place where we cannot move. And we take multiple, a lot of pictures to create a video which is in timeframe that is very fast, and it ends up being a fast video but still presenting what we want to present.
And now at the high school, we have Lauren, Matt, and Mike.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Theriot, and I'm a part of student tech support at Newington High School. So I planned out pretty much everything for the tech support help desk. My vision for the tech support help desk is to have a specific spot at NHS for students and even teachers to come with Chromebook and application questions. The help desk is located in the library, and students can come in during their study periods. During each period, there will be a student, tech support student there, ready to help with Chromebook questions, including Google Drive, Docs, Sheets, and application questions. I was involved in all aspects of the Chrome, sorry. I was involved, I was involved in all aspects of the tech support planning process. I created, I created a business. I created a promotional poster for above the desk, business cards, and signage to be... It's a signage to be placed around the school. I also contacted students from the tech support group to see who would be interested in helping out during their open periods. I also worked closely with Mr. Solerno and Ms. Norton to see who would be, to... See who else would be interested, and have Mr. Solerno help me get the desk that would be used for the help desk. And Ms. Norton also helped me with my poster and business card designs. The help desk will be going through a full launch next year and will be test-run at the end of this year. It is teaching me independence, interpersonal skills, collaboration, coordination, and enter, and management. This will all benefit me in the future and for my career. I plan to pursue a degree in networking and to be a leader in the field of IT. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michael Golovieco. I'm also with us in tech support along with Matt. First off, Matt and I have been granted the, or have been privileged by Dr. Collins to be called upon to participate in NCTV. We helped run a show called After the Bell, which we can help get involved with the community and let them know what's going on in the Newington Public School System. We believe it's a great opportunity to help expand our knowledge and experiences with audio, video, and camera, not only computers and programs in Newington High School, such as the Chromebooks. And it's also a great step up for John Wallace and Martin Kellogg students who are involved in those TV programs to help incorporate in NCTV and expand their knowledge if they choose to be involved in that field.
Alright, so with NCTV, I'm Matt by the way. And so with NCTV, we are granted the privilege of using all their professional equipment. So we get to use their $4,000 cameras, we get to use their soundboards, their switchers. It's a great time there. So we also get many opportunities. The biggest opportunity we have is After the Bell with Dr. Collins. Great show, you should all watch it. Every third Wednesday at 7 o'clock. It's really great. You learn a lot. Then the next thing, then we also have other opportunities. Another opportunity we had this year was recording the Flash football game. That one was a big one. There were many cameras all over the place. Michael was involved with it. And it was a fun time. We learned real hands-on experience, see how it's actually like being a director, a cameraman, all the positions. That's it, okay. And then we also get involved with the community, like the Fall Game, and then also any other show, NCTV, guys.
Thank you all to the students. Great job. This year's been... It's been such a monumental year in terms of the growth that we're making through the Tech Spur program that part of my idea to continue this and to keep it going was completing an application to Google Headquarters to become an innovator. And I just got back from London as chosen as one of 36 individuals in the world as an innovator. And my innovation project for the next year will be utilizing all of these kids to promote digital equity and social justice, so we can provide opportunities for more people to experience those things. Dr. Collins asked me to really just touch upon my experience at Google. So 36 of us from 11 different countries went to London. Google Headquarters is everything you've ever seen it to, or thought it to be, such as in the movie Internship. Every 150 feet, there's a micro kitchen, because they want your mind hungry, not your stomach. We had a week of collaboration. This is my group of six, individuals from Jordan, Singapore, Vancouver, England, and South Africa. We were a team that week. We also were challenged, and challenged on things that really pushed us, where we didn't have much time to think, similar to what the DECA kids went through, where we had to come up with an idea and pitch that idea to our fellow innovators. We also had sparks from people across the globe, including workers at Google. This is David Hotler. David had a theory that you must eat the whole apple, core and all and the stem, if you're going to get involved in this. And it was a great speech until he broke out all the apples, and we hadn't eaten an apple. I felt like I was pledging a fraternity again. I have friendships for life. We are all on Google Hangouts. We constantly, constantly talk, solving each other's problems, whether it's in the classroom today or it's a problem that they're going to face in the future in their district. It's absolutely friendships for life. And it was an experience for a lifetime that I'll treasure forever. And my only problem now, mission accomplished, accomplished, what's next? So I want to thank the board for your support. It's been a great year, great two years actually, with educational technology. We're at the forefront. We're going to continue to be a forefront. But now we're going to let the students take the lead to bring us there. Thank you very much.
You guys are awesome, by the way. Hannah's not here, but there's, it takes a lot to put that show on and they are the ones who do it. Plus everybody downstairs, I know you're watching too.
And thank you. I mean, I, you know, God, I use the help desk at work all the time, especially at my new job. And I just can't believe that we have help desks within our schools, I mean, run by the students. It's amazing, it's fabulous. The work you're doing is great, and thank you, all of you who spoke. You all did a wonderful, wonderful job. Thank you. Mr. Sylvia?
Ladies and gentlemen, as a member of the board, this is my most favorite, favorite subject. It's only because it's the most I know. Everything else I really don't know. But the manner in which you've presented your material, your public speaking skills, and your presentation layer is wonderful. And I commend all of you on your efforts. I can see you all taking my place in the technology field. And I really, really am encouraged to see your progress and how you're helping the rest of the community. I will be to the middle schools shortly to have my computers repaired, and I'll be looking for the three of you back there. Yeah, so again, thank you all very much. I really, I really am humbled by the manner that you guys are absorbing and embracing this new frontier. Owen, Mr. Solerno, congratulations.
Emily?
Yeah, you guys are pretty impressive, I have to say. Just having the courage to come up and speak in front of us and is, I know that's not easy as adults, it's hard, so I applaud you for that. And I'm really, really excited that you're taking advantage of the opportunities that are here for you. Being able to do your, the TV show downstairs and then running the equipment at the football game on your own, like, that's really, really cool, just the opportunities you guys have at school, setting up the tech, the Tech Spurt desk at the high school. Those are all skills, and you guys too. I don't want to forget about you guys in elementary school, the things that you're doing also. These are skills that you're going to be able to use going forward. So just take, like I said to the other kids, take what you're getting, the opportunities you have now, and just keep building on them. You guys are in a great spot, so keep up the good work.
So I know that you all are the most tech savvy in your families, so to the parents that came with you, you're answering the questions, fixing the computers, updating all the things that they don't know how to do, so great job. And it's very impressive. From elementary, middle school, and on, high school, you guys are doing wonderful things. We're very impressed. Thank you, and Jay, good job.
I just want to say I'm proud of all of you guys. You guys have done an amazing job, especially at the elementary. You guys are awesome.
Thanks again, and I'm sure you probably want to jet, but feel free. Thank you very much for coming. Okay, next up on the agenda, we have a report on professional learning, and I probably think that Stephen is going to be presenting.
It is, and I'm beginning to notice a pattern that lately I'm always after the really good presentations, especially the ones that involve students, and I'm thinking we need to reverse this, so I don't have to live up to such a high standard. So annually, we do provide a report on professional learning in the Newington Public School System. And I think it's just most important to share that kind of our purpose. Our purpose of the Newington Public Schools Professional Learning System is really to improve student achievement, and we do that through continual professional growth for all of our staff. So what you'll see in the original board packet is just a cover memo. If you open up your... If you open up your, um, folder, there's a more, um, comprehensive report. And, um, in that report, it's broken down into about four sections. Um, first section, uh, the cover i- is really just our, our philosophy and our beliefs. But when you get into the second page and, and you start to see some of the professional learning activities that we've engaged in, uh, you're going to notice that first we focus on the district-directed professional learning. And when we talk about professional learning in the Newington Public Schools, what we really look at first is, um, a process that we just engaged in a few days ago, which is our strategic planning process, which then helps us identify what our, our district improvement plan is and our school improvement plans are. And from that, teachers are also able to then identify their personal, uh, improvement plans through, through the evaluation system and, and development plan. So we take kinda all of those elements and we begin to build out, uh, district-directed professional development that helps align and, and, and address the needs that we have as an organization. So that way we can all learn and grow in the same direction to help all students achieve at high levels. So you're going to see a list of the professional learning that occurred on such days as the full professional learning days, uh, for example, on Election Day, uh, the half-days of professional learning and also the early release Tuesdays that the Board of Education, uh, continues to support in our calendar. Um, thereafter, you'll also notice that, uh, within and embedded in a lot of those professional learning opportunities are, uh, a big push that we've had this year, which were internal staff facilitated professional learning. Uh, we've really worked hard to capitalize on the, um, strengths and the experiences and expertise of our staff to deliver and hold professional learning opportunities here in Newington. And this year, again, um, just as last, we continue to exceed having the most, uh, professional staff development come right from our own internal capacity and it's really just been phenomenal. And we'll continue to, to move forward in that direction. Uh, the second level of professional learning, uh, because, um, we need to, to look at all staff, is for our administrative council. So all of our administrators engage every other week in administrative council in which, um, mostly, uh, central office personnel, uh, work to facilitate the growth of our administrative staff. Um, and then there's a third level of professional learning, which is really, uh, when we might not have the expertise in-house, uh, which is far and few in between, but we do run into those dilemmas and we have to outsource, uh, professional learning and bring in consultants. Uh, we had a couple areas this year where we focused on that, uh, need. And so when those times arise, uh, we do bring in folks that can help move us forward. And the very last section you're going to see is the out-of-district conferences and workshops. So when we don't have time to either manage professional learning ourself or bring someone in, we do provide opportunities for our staff to, um, attend workshops, uh, that are meaningful and relevant to the work that they do each and every day. And, uh, then they can bring that ad in and help continue to improve student achievement in the classroom or in the building if it's at the administrative level or for the organization if it's at our level. So, um, those are really the, the four main areas that you're going to see the professional learning outlined in the report that's in your, in your folder. Uh, some of the highlights I would tell you about this year, we had a, a very, um, uh, deep focus on a, a way of planning and instructing in the classroom that was consistent through kindergarten through 12th grade, which is called Understanding by Design. So we focused heavily on that, um, planning and instructional approach, uh, and all educators in Newington focused on that, uh, so we can continue to align our practices in a very consistent way, uh, for instructional delivery. Uh, similarly, from what you just saw, one very big, uh, area and highlight of professional learning was through Google and the integration of technology. Uh, we had Google Summits this year. We had many professional learning opportunities focused on technology integration and we had well over 100 staff members now who are Google certified, um, which is a great accomplishment and one that we support very well in this district. Some of our needs, uh, continue to be to develop programs and systems for personalized and job embedded professional learning. Um, so we continue to do a very good job at meeting the organizational needs of professional learning, but when it comes down to the personalized needs of every educator, every leader, every staff member, uh, we continue to look at ways and systems that can help support that professional learning and, um, so we will continue to do that moving forward.
Mr. Scholman.
Last year at budget time, we cut one of the administrators whose chief responsibility was professional learning, so I was wondering if you could elaborate on what impact that's had, what you've, how you've seen that impact professional learning district this year and what you've done to try to make up for that, um, loss.
Well, um, I'll, I'll, I'll start backwards. Um, that's how the understanding by design model works backwards, so I'll start there. So what I would tell you is, uh, the makeup for the loss has been, um, my wonderful colleagues here at the table and the ones that are not here, um, have, have worked collaboratively to be able to try to continue consistent, um, um, implementation of the systems that we had started. Uh, and I think, um, we're, we're working very hard at that and, and, and we're, we're doing a, a good job. Um, and we continue to try to look at ways where we can be more efficient and effective at that. Um, and what impact has that had? Um, I just think we, we are, are, are less resourced, so we are trying to do a little bit more with less. And, um, and the impact has been, um, not, you know, i- i- it's been taking a greater approach at the building level and utilizing, uh, the coaches and, uh, our coordinators to help us, uh, continue to deliver that, um, professional learning. And, uh, so without their support, I don't think we would have been able to manage it thus far, but, uh, they've been a tremendous resource and, and asset in us moving the professional learning forward. And I don't know if my colleagues would share anything else to, to answer that question.
And just as a follow-up, not to let the cat out of the bag, but one of the things we may be discussing later on tonight is reassigning two instructional coaches into classroom teaching positions. So on top of losing administrator last year, losing that resource, what's your expectation for, and I'm sure we'll talk about this a little more later, but what's your expectation for how that will impact next year's professional learning for our staff?
Well, I, I think it continues to, to make it more difficult to, to really get to the level of what I just expressed as some of the needs, which are to, you know, identify and provide that job embedded professional learning, uh, that more personalized learning. Um, we know learning, uh, is best when it's in the moment, when it's coached, when it's, you know, let me model something for you in front of, you know, in your classroom. You watch, you try, I give feedback and we go back and forth collaboratively. We know that's the, the very best and the highest level of, of changing practice and being able to help our students achieve at the highest of levels. So, um, when we are trying to attain that goal, um, it makes it a little more difficult and, um, but we continue to search for ways to be able to work, um, with what we have. And we're always appreciative of what we have and what we'll keep working with, you know, the resources that are provided by the Board of Education.
Any other questions for Mr. Farisi? Thank you. Okay, um, next up, we have a report on the employee computer purchase plan and I think Bill's gonna fill us in on that.
Yep. So beginning in 1995, 1996, we, uh, the board, um, adopted this, uh, purchase plan, which is a no cost to the Board of Education. It does allow employees to, uh, purchase a new device, including a phone. And, uh, and we just deduct it from, from the payroll. It's been very successful. This year, we only had four, four people take advantage of it. However, uh, it's not, uh, doesn't mean to say that there won't be more. And I would, uh, strongly recommend that the board, uh, continue this practice, um, since there is no cost to it.
Mr. Scholman.
Um, is it, I, I know they get a notice at the beginning of the year in their, like, beginning packet. Does anything go out, like, the middle of the year to remind them that this, cause, you know, people might forget in the heat of the year that, like, around Christmas time or holiday time, um, you know, this is an option if you're buying devices. I don't know if more, if more people would take advantage of it.
They certainly could, right?
That's a great idea.
Just cause I'm, I'm just shocked that only four, because there's so much new stuff that comes out and so many different devices.
Maybe, like you said, at the beginning of the year, there's so many other things.
Other things going on that maybe it's better to have it a couple months later and, you know, like, hey, holiday, if anyone's going shopping, remember you can take advantage of this program, you know, for, for yourselves and families.
We'll look at, uh, the number of people who have taken advantage of this, this year was, I think, a fluke.
Yeah, I mean, 335 in 20, 22 years is, is a good number, so.
Yep.
It's cool, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. Um, next item is a discussion on the use of school building fees and a possible increase. Um, I always turn to Lou for that, for this one.
Good evening, everyone. The, uh, every year, the board, uh, evaluates the, uh, reasonableness of passing along our cost that we absorb to support outside organizations, uh, for the use of our buildings. The way the process works, uh, is that if the organization, uh, wants to rent from us, they'll fill out a building use permit. It'll be priced out, uh, based on the resources requested and support requested, uh, and the duration and the day of the week. And whatever revenues are yielded from that, uh, ultimately end up in the board capital improvement fund. So a receipt during the 16, 17 fiscal year will be re-appropriated April of 2018 for use in the year after. So we're always on a time delay. So we have a, uh, to keep numbers very simple, just for the illustration. If the board expended $50,000 on behalf of all outside organizations, uh, utilizing our buildings, any recouping of money is an expense that we recognize in this year's operating budget and the future benefit comes back to the board, um, in the, uh, however the money is deployed through the CIP fund, the board CIP fund, not the town CIP fund. So, uh, this has real value for us. Uh, we do always try to match the real cost that we have to incur with our bargaining unit expenses, uh, along with just the cost of living, uh, that we absorb for increased utility rates, commodity costs for, uh, cleaning and, uh, toiletry products that we have to use just to keep the building stocked and operational all the time. So in the current environment, we're walking into a, uh, union, uh, rate increase of 2.25% for next year. We have had, uh, because of the, um, market conditions, we have a bit of an uptick in the, uh, electrical cost for, uh, ourselves. We had about an 8% increase, uh, with the expiration of our old, uh, generation contract and the new one. And we're pretty stable in all the commodities that are here. So in proposing a 3% increase in the rates, really tries to balance, you know, the real costs that are incurred and are taken away from our budget that could be used for educating our own students and ultimately looking to gain that back, uh, through the board CIP account in the future year.
Mr. Sylvia.
Uh, thank you. So Lou, the 3%, is that gonna keep us above break even? Or projected?
At break even.
At break even?
Yes.
So the thought that's going through my mind is, I don't know if break even is enough, given that it's a future application of, uh, we, we don't see the funds for another year.
Correct.
Or we can't apply the funds for another year. And I'm wondering if, um, and it doesn't cover the depreciation that is incurred upon the, uh, facilities themselves.
No, we, we do not do that.
You're just looking at it as a sunk cost, right? Um, yeah, I, you know, I'm in favor of at least three. I wouldn't be opposed to a five, only just so that, uh, we're getting what I call the future value, because we don't see, we can't use the funds for another year. But I appreciate the answers.
About how much do we, how much is in that fund right now? How much have we brought in in fees?
Every year, we get somewhere between 20 and 60,000 dollars for building use, depending on who walks up looking to rent our facilities. We have a number of cultural organizations that were on their rotation, you know, they'll rent it for an all-day event on a Sunday, uh, dance recital organizations just look to use it. And it all depends how the schedule works out, you know, for, I mean, everybody's, uh, needs and what we actually have committed at, at the buildings those days.
Okay, another question. Uh, how many, uh, organizations come from within the Newington community and how many of them come from outside of Newington? Just the percentage ballpark.
We probably have about 10 regular, uh, groups. We have all the Cub Scouts, uh, Girl Scout groups that use the building. Uh, you have-
From Newington?
Yeah, you have the, um, Military Wist. We have Barbershop Quartets. Um, there's about three different dance studios from different places right in the area that are here. We have had occasions where, uh, organizations like Lincoln School in New Britain, uh, that, uh, private, uh, tech school wants to hold their graduation ceremony. Some places will come and rent the auditorium for that day. So, uh, most everybody is regionally close, uh, but not absolutely. We do have groups from Berlin and, um, Meriden coming occasionally. And I have to, I haven't looked at the list in a little while, so I can't quote it.
I was just, I know what Josh is gonna say, so I was thinking about if, if we're looking at how much we're passing a lot, if we're passing along these increases to the community and it's a, we're here for the community, does it make sense to pass those along? But if we're actually, the people using the facility generally come from outside of our community, maybe that would be, um-
Let me explain it a little further.
Well, you have the fee schedule here. It's, it's for-profit and non-profit?
In the fee schedule, there's actually four tiers to the fee schedule.
I never understand this fee schedule, I've tried.
The first part, our, uh, Schedule A, our groups affiliated directly with Newington where there's no fee charged for anything that's going on, okay? The second group really is all Park and Rec programs, where Park and Rec is sponsoring, you know, winter basketball. So they're collecting money for running the program for us. We supply a custodian to man the building on those Saturdays, uh, or event days that they want. So we basically just, whatever cost we incur for the custodian, we pass that back to Park and Rec. This is strictly for groups that are either, you know, with nonprofit designation or a group that comes in for profit. You know, we will have these basketball clinics or soccer clinics that wanna use the space for a day that, uh, or a week, you know, putting on a clinic. You know, depending on where they fall in the scale, those are the type of groups we get revenue from. So the, uh, in-town permanent groups, if you think about it, really are treated very fairly in the scheduling. And we're absorbing the cost to sponsor those groups all the time. And Park and Rec is basically functioning in, I won't say a for-profit arrangement, but they're collecting revenue and they're anticipating generating, uh, a net benefit for their program. And if they would take the cash and we pay the bill, that's not really right. So it only creates the equity, uh, for the board at that point.
Mr. Sylvia.
Thank you. So that's just raised a little bit of confusion in my mind. So the, the fees that we charge Park and Rec, does that meet our break even point or are we subsidizing it?
That's, we charge actual, that gets passed back to them.
Okay, and then Schedule D is for the, um-
D is for-profit.
For-profit, and so there's, we're look, we're above break even on that rate chart?
Yes, those are substantially higher than the nonprofit rates.
Right, I noticed that, so, okay. All right, so Parks and Rec is at least break even? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scholman.
Um, I, I, I have to say it because I'm not gonna be at the meeting where you actually vote, so if I can proxy vote next meeting, um, for a no, since I won't be able to be here or call in, um, my feeling over the last couple of years is that in our operating budget, we cover these costs. Um, I understand the costs rise and we need to cover it out of here, um, but we then take it back into our public school CIP account. And it's a little more difficult for me right now because, um, we have a massive maintenance hole that we're gonna talk about more later, um, and it's just been growing. It started last year in earnest really and this year is just a gigantic hole coming up. Um, and so this money does come back and we can use it for those, those larger maintenance things, for replacing rugs, for doing painting, bathrooms, all the things that get used during these programs that are renting. But I am still on the no right now. Um, I just don't think there's enough justification to increase it by 3%. I think that we should give a break to the community at large in those fees. I mean, they, it's small to groups and organizations and I get that sometimes. We had that conversation last year. Um, but it does trickle down at some point and, you know, I, I, I don't see the reason to say yes to it every year. Um, I've said no, I'm, I'm, I'm less hopeful this year that I get five votes than I was last year, cause I won't be here to twist any arms, uh, at the next meeting. But I proxy vote no on this, just so we're all on the same page. And Mr. Sylvia, you promised me another no vote this year, so I'm twisting your arm now. You were with me last year.
Uh, I'll claim Alzheimer's.
He just proposed a 5%.
I know, I know.
Were you in the same meeting?
That threw me for a loop.
I said I was comfortable with 5%. I said I was comfortable with five percent.
That's why I said you proposed.
I wasn't expecting that.
Emily.
What did we raise it last year?
It was three percent last year.
Is it three percent every?
No, it all depends on circumstances.
Okay.
It's evaluated every year.
Okay.
I've, I've just, it's been three percent every year.
It's been for a while, yeah.
For, for five years, it's been three percent, so.
The labor contracts have been very steady along those lines.
They, they have, but so.
I can remember in years, it's been up eight in certain years because of, uh, you know, major, uh, utility costing increases, things like that.
Like you mentioned, though, we've, we've been more reliant on this and health benefits, uh, to do maintenance than we ever have, so.
Any further discussion? Because we're not voting tonight, but, yeah. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll just throw in my two cents. Um, or is it three percent now? Um, I voted no last year. This year I'm switching. I'm gonna vote yes. I'm sorry, Josh. Because I, I, yes, I do believe that the community is getting a service. Some of them are, aren't paying a fee and everything, but our budget is, is low, so the community's getting a break in taxes and things like that. So, um, I, I don't wanna have money that should be going, help our, the education of our students be used for something else. So I feel that the three percent covers our costs. I'm going to vote yes this year when it's time.
Any further discussion on this? Okay. Thank you. Um, we're gonna move to discussion item five, which is meeting dates for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. And for that, I'm gonna turn to Dr. Collins.
This is very simple. These are the meeting dates, uh, for, uh, next year. And you notice the organizational meeting is on November fourteenth. And, uh, the rest of the dates are pretty standard. And, uh, you'll be asked, I think, at the next board meeting to approve them.
Any discussion or questions?
So I shouldn't put them in my brand-new calendar?
What is that?
I just bought a new calendar today. These are not set in stone.
I haven't seen one of those.
Next year.
Okay. Uh, presentation, okay, we're sorry, one. Agenda item E, number six, presentation textbooks for approval. And I'm assuming that's gonna be Mrs. Maraca.
Good evening and thank you, Mrs. Petronio. The books are all sitting in front of Dr. Collins. Um, the grade eight English curriculum is under revision, um, and I'm very pleased. I was telling our English coordinator, um, Sarah Whalen, that it was very challenging not to really take one of the books out of the pile and start reading it when I was doing the research for them. Of the nine books, two are dystopian novels, and those are Nineteen Eighty-Four and The Handmaid's Tale. Um, those are where, uh, if you say dystopia in the Greek, it's, um, bad place, so they're usually, that the world is in a bad fix at the time. There are four selections that are memoirs, and they're all very unique and interesting. Uh, one of the novels called First They Killed My Father, uh, is by a Cambodian author, and it really is about her life in a privileged family until about nineteen seventy-five, when the Khmer Rouge Army forces her family out and they get dispersed. And it isn't until much later in her life that she reunites with, uh, some of her remaining si, well, with her remaining siblings, which, um, not all are still living. Then there's one, again, that, as I'm putting this together, it, it says, it's called Reading Lolita in Tehran, and it's a memoir. And it is by, actually, an Iranian author who taught at the University, um, of Tehran up until about, or after nineteen seventy-nine, but once she refused to wear a veil, she was expelled from the university. So it's about, uh, her, she had a book study with a group of women, and so it's about that life that she shared with those young women. And then the next, um, memoir is one that many of you probably have read called Angela's Ashes by Frank McCourt. And again, that focuses mostly on his life in Ireland. And the last memoir is called The Sound of Gravel. And that's a memoir, um, of a girl growing up in a polygamist family in Mexico, and she travels back and forth with this family between Mexico and the U.S. And it's also, um, how she leaves that sort of com, polygamous community and, uh, the strong bond she has with her siblings because she takes care of them once she breaks away, uh, from that community. Um, then there are, there is one autobiography. One is what I would consider a reference book and one is nonfiction. So the autobiography is called Incidents in the Life of a Slave Girl. That's by Harriet Jacobs. Um, and it's an autobiography of a young mother and fugitive slave that was actually published in, um, eighteen sixty-one. The document, the book documents Jacob's life as a slave and how she gained freedom for herself and her children. What I consider a reference book is called Bird by Bird, Some Instruction on Writing and Life, and it's by Anne Lamont. And it really is, um, Anne Lamont's take on what it means to be an effective writer, but she does it in more of a story manner, but it is still considered more of a reference on how to write, um, how, she offers advice on how to navigate, et cetera. And the nonfiction book by Dave Cullen is called Columbine. Um, and this is where the book examines the Columbine High School massacre, and it covers two major storylines in it. The killer's evolution leading up to the attack, and then the struggles of the survivors. And those will be, um, books for adding choice as well as reading in the English eleven, um, cl, course for both honors and, uh, college prep.
I thought that you started by saying these were for grade eight curriculum.
No, grade eleven.
Grade eleven.
Grade eleven in English.
I was just reading the back one, saying, oh, wow.
High school.
Yep.
The committee's done an excellent job at bringing a variety of, uh, literature and books into the curriculum. And those will be available in Dr. Collins' office. Unless you take one, just sign it out so we know where it's gone.
Mr. Scholman.
I, I was gonna say, when I was just looking through the titles before the meeting, um, I was really happy to see that at, at least a few of them are of serious public concern right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so should certainly pique the, um, students' interest, especially the one that has the, uh, new series on Hulu. Um, so I think that's a really cool thing, um, that will pique their interest, and these are some really, um, diverse and interesting, um, titles, which I, I love to see.
Which one's the series on Hulu?
The, The Handmaid's Tale. It's with the woman who was in Mad Men.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes. Mr. Sylvia.
Um, The Sound of Gravel. What age group is this one targeted?
That's for our grade eleven English class.
Thank you.
You're welcome. These are all grade English eleven class.
Grade eleven. Thank you.
Grade eleven. That makes sense. Okay. Any further questions for Mrs. Maraca? Okay. We're gonna move to an action item. Action item number seven, which is a resolution honoring our two thousand seventeen valedictorian and salutatorian. Josh, would you like to make the motion?
I would. Move the Board of Education proclaim Theodora Markova as valedictorian for the Newington High School graduating class of two thousand seventeen, and Arya Jacob as salutatorian for the Newington High School graduating class of two thousand seventeen.
Can I have a second? Second by Mrs. Ancona. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, and I look forward to, uh, presenting them with resolutions on May seventeenth at the, uh, Scholars Breakfast. That was really fun last year, and I'm very excited to do that again.
This is interesting speaker.
Yes, yes. It's, it's wonderful. And congratulations to these two students and... Okay. Uh, moving right along, I'm going to, uh, let's see. We have two action items, um, eight and nine, revisions to the school calendar for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, and then an action item on the school calendar for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Um, should I make a motion and then we can discuss? Okay. So can somebody, uh, read the motion? Emily?
Um, just one of the motions or do you want?
No, go ahead. Just do the first one, sorry.
Okay. Move the Board of Education adopt the revisions to the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school calendar as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Scholman. Um, and discussion, Dr. Collins?
No.
No? Okay. I didn't know if you had something to, Mr. Scholman.
I would just say, we discussed in committee a month ago, we discussed at our last board meeting all of the changes. Everyone had a chance to ask questions. So I'm good on the changes because we discussed a couple of times, wanted to make sure anyone tuning in tonight knew we had actually talked about it twice.
Yes. Right. So when we vote quickly on these things, it's not that we haven't discussed them, it's because we've discussed them at length in other meetings. Exactly. Thank you. So, uh, a motion's been made and seconded, and we just had our discussion. Any further discussion before we vote? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Can I have the second school calendar motion? Mr. Scholman.
Move the Board of Education adopt the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school calendar as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Emily. Um, any discussion? I think it would be the same discussion as before. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Deep breath. We need a breath, break. Okay. Um, we are now at the point, um, where we need to continue our discussion and maybe have possible action on some budget adjustments to our, um, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, uh, budget. And I don't know if I should make a motion, yes, make a motion first to discuss. Right, okay. All right, right. So we'll, and then how, we're gonna do it, we can discuss. Okay. All right. So can I have a motion? Emily.
Move the Board of Education budget for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, uh, year be reduced by one million nine hundred eighty-six, nope, one, yeah, sorry. One million nine hundred eighty-six thousand nine hundred fifty-eight dollars as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools.
Can I have a second? Seconded by Mrs. Ancona. And we're at the discussion.
Okay. So, yes, I am recommending we reduce by-
Because we have to.
One point nine million dollars. Not that I want you to, but you have no choice. So, uh, the board does need to get down to the amount of seventy million three eighty-nine six forty-seven or zero point two-nine percent. So I'd like to draw your attention to, uh, in your packets, we have, um, discussed a couple of different options. We did make, uh, take recommendations from, uh, board members, and, uh, so we are, have provided you with, um, two options. And, um, I'm gonna let Lou kind of take it from here.
I just wanna jump in for a technical correction to start with. Uh, if everyone can recall, uh, there were several motions passed the last, uh, board meeting, which took action on the reductions for, uh, uh, the maintenance items and the, uh, setup of the special ed four hundred thousand dollar allowance. So technically, the motions for tonight only need to yield four hundred ninety-five thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and ten cents.
That's right. We already cut the, the-
Right. So we've already got those other three in here, so that's really the part that we're working on. So if we did another motion, then we may have to reverse it, so.
Okay.
Do we need to adjust the motion?
Yeah.
No. Nope. So why don't we, you have to amend the motion.
All right, Jane, lead us through this.
We just, we already took some off the last time.
Four one nine nine one three point one zero.
Four one nine?
Nine one three point-
One zero.
So we're adding that back into the reduction?
No.
No.
The one million nine eighty-six.
The microphone on.
The one million nine eighty-six should just be stated as four hundred nineteen thousand and-
Okay. All right. So I'm going to move that we amend the motion. And I'm, I'm moving that we amended to read that we're reducing the budget by four hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred thirteen thousand ten cents. Someone has to second that.
I'll second it.
Okay. So now all in favor of amending the motion? All those in favor of amending the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion is amended.
Motion is amended. Passes unanimously.
And now we're going to discuss.
Now we're gonna discuss.
Okay. So, if we can kind of walk you through this, um, these are very difficult decisions. Uh, there are two options. Um, neither of them is great. Um, I wanna draw your attention to the fact that, that we have already cut all of the, I wanna say, non-instructional, um, areas. So all of that has already been cut. And if we can, uh, as a backdrop, start on the first page to, or really walk you through the two thousand sixteen, seventeen impact of the point four nine budget that we had. So essentially, this is the second year of a zero, um, percent increase. So last year we, or this, this year, we received point four nine and six hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, nine hundred twenty dollars of that additionally is carried in CIP, and five hundred fifteen thousand was a self-funded contingency fund, which, if you remember, was put in place as a contingency fund for emergencies. So in that, within that five hundred or six hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars, a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine, eight twenty-eight was for student devices. So the question comes up, where did we get the money for student devices? Well, that's where we got the money. We had to wait until July, uh, to order them because we didn't have the money until then. Um, so that's what deferred the devices. So they came in later in the year. We were able to purchase them. Hundred thousand dollars purchased one bus. The bus replacement program, as you know, is six per year. We were able to purchase one with this money. And then three hundred fifty thousand dollars was for operating expenses for maintenance, which we're gonna talk about a little bit later, was taken, taken out of this, which is why I didn't want to use CIP in this way to begin with, because it's just not stable. So that's kind of where we are. We, we funded positions initially, using the five hundred fifteen thousand dollars. We worked very hard to defer wherever we could to try to save that money, the five hundred fifteen thousand dollars, so we didn't have to spend it. So it could be used, as it was intended, as a contingency or for emergencies. So knowing that we were working hard to save that, we had, actually ended up with, I think, another a hundred and eighteen dollars at the end of the year, um, on top of the five fifteen. So we did really well. And unfortunately, we, we, we set the seventeen, eighteen budget to come in with a two point four nine, budgeting very tightly because we thought we had, were gonna have that five hundred fifteen thousand dollars in the bank, so to speak, for emergencies. So unfortunately, we don't. So we're, that, that also added to our issue. We, as we described earlier, we laid off two central office administrators. We laid off, um, a teacher. We laid off a computer lab tutor. We eliminated four positions through attrition that had an impact on class sizes. We have very large class sizes throughout the district, especially, you know, at our elementary level, we have third-grade class sizes of twenty-five. We deferred five positions, including the high school academy, and we increased class sizes even further. We eliminated the gifted and talented program at the middle and elementary schools. The program had been, uh, eliminated at the high school a few years earlier. We eliminated the Tuesday aftercare, uh, program. We eliminated the credit summer school program. We canceled new math courses at Newington High School. We eliminated the period nine and ten course option, which was part of our plan to, uh, to regionalize with Weatherfield and Berlin on some of our career tech courses. So we had period nine and ten seed money, if you will, in there to offer those courses. Uh, with that, we cut. Uh, the administrators have taken a salary freeze for the second consecutive year. The Newington High School pool continues to stay closed, um, because we cannot meet[1642.87] to stay closed, because we cannot meet the mandate of providing the supervision that is needed, required by mandate, we delayed the purchase of instructional materials, and those, some of those may be purchased this year, using what's left of the health benefits credit, if the Board chooses to do that. Only priority one maintenance items, as we, we learned at Anna Reynolds this year, only priority one maintenance items were addressed, if the Board wishes to use some of that remaining health benefits money, you could choose to do that. The technology plan was not fully funded, you heard earlier from our kids what, what great things that they are doing, unfortunately, we're not funding the plan, as it was intended, partial funding for bus replacement program, so even though we had the money for one, we were getting caught up, and I want to draw your attention back to the 2014, 15 year, where we didn't buy any, after a few years, we had to buy 11 in one year, that was the previous Board, though, we don't want to get in that situation where we have to buy 11 in one year again, so you may choose to use some of that money there, but you're talking about 500 or so thousand dollars, and there's about three or four items here, big-ticket items, to spread it around on, and there was approximately 6.8 million cut from staff requests this current year, so that just really provides a backdrop to the situation that we're in, and just the magnitude of what another zero will mean. So, if I can bring you to the next page, the first option takes advantage of all of the non-replacements, our goal here was to lay off the fewest number of people as possible, so anybody who vacated a position, for the most part, we tried not to fill, obviously, there are some areas where we, we have to, we don't have a choice, so item number one, or option number one, gets you down to a point where there are only four layoffs, and the next one is five.
I'm sorry, can you, just, again, for people who don't have this, could you even just read, like, our starting point, like, the actual dollar amounts, I think that might be helpful.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So, this year's budget, operating budget, is 70,185,928. The Board approved 72,376,605, or 3.12 percent. The allocation was 203,719, or 0.29, so you're going from 70,185,928 to 70,389,647. The payroll obligations that we had altogether were 2.51 percent, and my request in February, on February 1st, was 2.49. So, I'll go through both options with you, like I said, neither of them is good, we tried to take advantage of positions that have been vacated, whenever possible, and but, there was no way to avoid, no matter how hard we tried, to avoid layoffs altogether, so it will mean some layoffs, certainly nowhere near 48 positions, that is just something we, as we shared, had to be done by May 1st, by state statute. So I'll go through option one with you, adjustment number one would be to reverse the, the maintenance that was added to bring your budget up to 3.12, and that was because the 350,000 that was in CIP was not granted this year, therefore, the Board added it after the fact, so the first adjustment would be to reverse that, to take it back out, which brings you back down to 2.62. The next adjustment would be to reduce maintenance further by the amount of 400,000, which would defer your, your maintenance even further, so you're talking about 750,000 in additional deferred maintenance, that brings you down to 2.05.
Mr. Sylvia?
Obviously, I wasn't here when the Board elected to put what was cut from the CIP back into operating a budget, so were those the buses?
Maintenance.
It was maintenance and CIP that was not approved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Segal.
But tonight, we're looking at 419,000, so, and cuts, we already did all this, we already did the transferring last meeting, so
You, we never, remember, we, we, we knew the number, so the Board approved the number, but I never really brought that to you.
Okay, got it.
But, I said it was too much money to
Right, I understood, I remember.
Make an emotional decision, so, now we have to do it.
Okay.
So that's, that's the cut to maintenance, so that's a significant impact to, to how we're gonna maintain our buildings. The next one involves the staffing costs, using the 515,000 in the non-lapsing fund, and the following one does the same, you'll remember that the Board is allowed to carry over 1 percent of your budget, which is 701,000, so that's what the Board did, we would take 301,000 of that to be applied staffing costs, brings your budget now to .89.
And as a reminder, that's basically one-year funding there, right? That's one-year funding?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you, you will be in a 1.2 million budget hole.
Again, we're using that money that we saved, but that we don't know if we'll be there in the future to, to save teaching positions.
Yeah, you know, 515,000, and really trying my best not to, not to fill up positions is one thing, 1.2 million, there's just no way. Now, the, the next one, I want to kind of go over that a little carefully with you, we've had some events that have happened in the last three, four, four weeks or so, that have really been of concern, and I shared with you, because we had the 515,000 in there that we budget tighter in some of those other areas, special ed being one of them, we have had numerous outplacements over the past few weeks, six-figure outplacements, and there are people who moved to town who are already outplaced, and therefore, the cost gets transferred to the Board. So, we need to take another 200,000 to cover that cost, so instead of 419,000, you're really looking at 619,000 in cuts that you need to make. Everybody understand that? Everybody understand why? Any questions on that? Okay, all right.
I, not on the, I understand the number, Dr. Collins?
Okay.
The question I have is that, was our Town Council aware of these numbers, since you said it just happened in the last few weeks?
No. When I did my budget, we, we had, we were tight, but I was counting on the 515,000 to be used for what if, you know, so that's when I presented the 2.49, so
The, the purpose of my question was, is that, my understanding within the Charter is that our Chairperson has the authority to go back to the Town Council, should we need the funds, to ask the Town Council for consideration of additional funds somewhere during the course of the year, should the need arise, and it would appear to me, on the 620,000, for lack of a better word, might be an excellent candidate for us to at least apprise and make them aware, that we're doing the best we can, that during the course of the next budget cycle, that our Chair would, may need to approach the Town Council to ask for these funds, to help supplement our current year, or future year, pardon me, I don't know, I just, I'm putting that out there because of my reading of the Charter and, and our approach that should we have in need for emergency funds?
Okay, but, the, the outplacements are new, the need for staffing, they were very well aware.
Correct, and so
And so, the majority of that money is, the majority of the money in that 600 is the staffing money?
Right.
And the 200,000 additional is the newer outplacement costs?
Agreed, and so where my mind's at is this, is that, and my, my understanding in, in talking with Town Council members, were that we had the full 1.2 million in savings available, we're now reserving some monies because of the situation in yours, which could cause us to have a need to go back to the Town Council.
You're right, we could, there is a need, but we did explain several times that we were not in a position to use all of the health benefits money to save positions, that, that was
That, that I understand completely, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm putting that out there because my understanding is, is that the Town Council was not aware of these additional costs that just surfaced, as Dr. Collins has brought up, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's, it's, it's something to make them aware of, that we may need to come and ask for some additional funds.
Can I clear?
Well, I, I just wanted to make two quick points, I think that they're well aware that we feel that we are incredibly tightly budgeted, I think they're well aware of notice on that, and I also think that we have a responsibility, and I don't know if you were hinting at this, but I've, I've, I've heard it pop up, whether or not we can just keep all of our staff on, and then plan to ask for more money at some point, or plan to give a bill of some kind to the Town Council to say, here, you pay, 'cause we don't have any money, and I think that we have
No, that
And, and I'm, I'm sorry if that wasn't your intention at all, but I've, I've heard it from, from others, and I think that we have a responsibility to budget responsibly, and, and budget in a way that we believe we can meet our obligations, which is why in years past, we've been very hesitant to budget out of non-lapsing money, or we've never used health benefits money, for instance, to pay for staffing costs until this year, because we owe it to the people that we employ to say that you will have continued employment, and I don't know why I'm looking at you, 'cause that wasn't your intent, anyway.
No, that wasn't my intent.
But to the community, but to the community at large
This is unknown information.
Right, but to the community at large, I think we have a responsibility to make sure that we're not, that we're budgeting a way that's responsible, that we're not planning on asking for more money as, as part of our plan, and I will say, the fact that it's, that it's unknown, this happens every year, this, this year, we're 300,000 over in special education program, and so there's flexibility within the budget, because we had instructional materials in there that we can defer, or maintenance people that we can defer, so that we can pay those costs, but when you budget so tightly, these things just pop up, and if it's in the last few weeks, it's after the Town Council adopted their budget, anyway, and this could be, this could be, this could take place September 1st, it could take place November 1st, next January 1st, we could have a million extra dollars, or there could be more magnet school, or, or whatever, but, you know, I think the larger point is that it's necessary to do this, because we have an obligation to make sure that we don't run out of money on purpose.
I agree with that, Josh.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, I was reading into it more, 'cause I had heard it other places.
Jane?
No, and I also think that we need to clarify again, because it keeps being put out there that we have the full 1.2 health benefits money to use, we can't, it's, my understanding that the Charter caps the amount that we can carry over to the next year that we can put in, so I think we transferred last time 700 something thousand into our non-lapsing operating account, right, something like that?
701.
Yeah, so we can't use it all for next year, so there's some that's gonna be left over this year, the balance of that 1.2, but we can't carry that over to next year.
Right, but we are, we are carrying over 1.2, it's just from different piles.
No, some of the
Because we have 515, we transferred 700 in.
From the health benefits, right.
It's confusing, because the numbers are the same.
Same, right.
But everyone keeps saying, use the full 1.2 health benefits, or not.
We have, we have 1.2, it's just two different years' benefits.
So, I was using the 1.2 that will be in our non-lapsing operational fund.
Right, and we, and Dr. Collins already talked about, and I don't think we can stress enough, that what's left over of this year is 1.2 million, after we transfer the 700 into non-lapsings, we have 580 or so, can be used to recover some of the instructional materials we cut out of this current year's, school year stuff, not the operating budget for next year, or the maintenance that was deferred, or the buses that were deferred, or the special ed overages.
Yeah, it can't be used to save people.
Correct, yeah.
But we are using the non-lapsing fund
To save people.
Which has 1.2 million to save people
Reusing all of it.
Which is irresponsible, but we would have to lay off scores of teachers if we didn't.
And you're already starting, you're starting at a, at a, at 1.73 percent, just right out of the gate next year, because unlike this year, I mean, the whole 1.2 million comes into our operating budget July 1st, so there, there won't be anything left. Okay, so we're down to adjustment number five, six, right, this, these two, I know this is painful, but there are no people in this position right now, so we would defer
Tell the public what that is.
Again, the opening of the two high school STEM academies, the Medical Science STEM Academy and the Aerospace Academy at Newington High School, there are approximately 350 students registered to take advantage of those courses, and those students would need to be rescheduled into other, other courses, so that is two positions, bringing your budget down again to 0.92 percent.
Sorry, Mr. Shulman.
I, I just want to say that I think it's alarming that this is the easiest cut, because there has been so much put into the program for STEM, and so many promises made to the public for years, facility built, programs created, trainings gone to, kids registering for courses, and we couldn't even get close to this being a tough choice, is, it's very sad to me, because this is something the community has supported for a very long time, our need in this area was made incredibly clear, what we needed to be able to do this, and we didn't even get in spitting distance.
I will point out that the students do have options here, there are magnet school options, which I guess we're, we're fortunate that we're in the Hartford area, because there are other, there are other options, it just creates another problem for you, which we were addressing, so the students do have other options, unfortunately, they won't be able to take advantage of Newington High School programs if they go to a magnet school.
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
Again, because of my absence, was this discussed during my absence with the Town Council, and they were aware that we, we wouldn't, it was, okay, thank you.
Could you, yeah, could you tell, tell us how many students have signed up for these STEM courses?
350.
350 students.
Thank you. I, I would also say that the second STEM teacher was something the Board felt strongly enough, that after Dr. Collins' presentation, we added into the budget before we transmitted to Town Council to say, 2.49 is what Dr. Collins says he would be able to do, but if you want the STEM Academy working full-fledged, we need an additional teacher to fully staff
Right, we did that, remember when we added the maintenance money back in, we added the STEM teacher?
So that's how you got to 3.12?
Yes, the maintenance and the STEM teacher.
Yep, and so it was incredibly clear what we needed to be able to do that, anything short, that's the first thing on the cutting block.
Right, I brought to the Board only my absolute bottom line, I brought to you my payroll for next year, is what I brought to you. The next one is actually an increase, but it will save you money, one of the things we have done over the past few years is anytime we get a certain number of students who are at risk of outplacement, we try to put a program together for them, and we are putting, put a self-contained classroom together, we now need to shift some staff around, we need to backfill the other special ed position, but this, so this is an add of 52,000, but it will save you approximately three outplacements, could be three, could be two, could be four, but, you know, even one would, would save you money, so that's an add. The next one is taking advantage of a retirement, and that is to eliminate, we're calling it middle school teacher one, we, we don't want to really talk about schools or people here.
If, if I may interject or ask, so a teacher that's reached retirement age was only earning 52,000 a year?
No, 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 what we do is, whenever we know that there is someone who's retiring, we take out what we call, take out the breakage.
Oh, it's got breakage in here, so you
We budget for, so if we know, before I do my budget, we factor it in here, so that is the average cost, we used to call it the peep's rate or the plan's rate, for what an average cost of, of a new teacher will be, it's not first step, it's not, but it's approximately what the average, sometimes we have to bring people in higher, some we can get at a lower rate, so that's the average, what we have seen.
Thank you.
So you'll see that 52,111 a lot, that's, that's why that's there. Okay, the, so that is a retirement, that will increase class sizes in this particular school from 21 to 24. Adjustment number 10 is your first layoff, and that is, that is in the amount of 33,787, that is an actual person, so net of unemployment, that increases class size from 22 to 25.
Good.
I, I just wanted to say that, because as we go down, there's another retirement and a resignation, that the number of adjustment isn't necessarily the priority number, this is kind of a group package, and it's not that we're prioritizing laying off over not filling a retirement, I think that this is just done, however you guys created it, for an ease of math, and when you altered it, 'cause I know this is different than what we looked at in committee on Monday, that it's not prioritizing layoffs, obviously, those are the last things that we would ever want to do, that they're just kind of jumbled in as a package.
Right, and we tried to keep, we took the, we took the schools out, and we grew up them by high school, middle school, elementary school and program, so adjustment number 10 gets you down to .87, and increases your class size from 22 to 25. Adjustment 11 is middle school teacher number three, that is also a layoff, in the amount of 37,681, net unemployment, brings you down to .82, increases class size in that school and grade from 22 to 24. Brings you down to point eight two, increases class size in that school and grade from twenty two to twenty four. Adjustment number eleven is high school teacher number one, and that is.
Number twelve, adjustment twelve.
Adjustment twelve, I'm sorry. Um, that is, um, taking advantage of retirement and eliminating high school teacher number one. Again, the peeps rate or the plans rate.
Does the, um, team have any recommendation on whether to reduce electives or increase the class sizes?
No, that will be up to the building, so we will bring it to the department and, and the, uh, the building and they will, that will let them choose.
Thank you.
On what they want to do. The, uh, adjustment number thirteen is also at the high school. Um, that would be a layoff. And the amount, uh, net unemployment is fifty three thousand, one hundred and ninety four dollars. Again, it would bring your budget down to point six seven, it would increase your class size. Or reduce the number of electives in that particular program.
If, if I may ask, I'm sorry, this is a number that's not following the repetitions of the fifty two one eleven?
This is an actual person, so this would be the actual amount of, uh, the person's salary net unemployment.
And that happened after you set the budget up, right? So that's why it's the whole thing.
It's a layoff.
Oh, that one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm, now the next one, I think is what you're talking about, uh, adjustment number fourteen. Okay, that is eliminate music teacher number one. And that is a resignation. That happened after the budget, after I presented the budget, which is why you see that amount there. So. By taking advantage of that, it would bring your budget down to point five four. And it would, um, obviously we would, um. Bring the music department in on this and have them, you know, get their input, but it would involve an involuntary transfer. Uh, from elementary to, to middle school likely. Now, in this item, in this option, we have eliminate music number, teacher number two. In the next option, we don't. So I want to, uh, just make that clear, so adjustment number fifteen in this option eliminates music teacher number two, this is a layoff. And it would bring your budget down to point four six. And it would likely, and again, this would really be up to the music department, but, um, we're just saying for, for the sake of argument. Defer elementary instrumental music from grade four to grade five. We obviously need their input on, on what would be most important, uh, for our kids. So we really can't make that decision without their input, so we would need to talk to them, but it, but this would call for. Um, eliminating music teacher number two, which would be a layoff. Uh, you're almost done. Adjustment number sixteen, eliminate instructional coach number one. And that would, um. We talked about the professional learning and, and the important work that they're doing, but this would be a reassignment of that coach to. A classroom position. Because the class sizes are uncomfortably large. So this would, um, allow for it, them to normalize, so to speak. And the same thing is true for adjustment number seventeen, so that would be two instructional coaches, elimination of two instructional coaches. Both would be reassigned.
We currently have six, so this would bring us to four?
I believe so. So you're down to point three one. And finally, and this, this adjustment was used as, um, you'll see it on the next one, really to balance. It's deferring a custodial maintenance position to October fifteenth. And that would bring it down to the number that you need to be at point two nine, and that would defer your custodial maintenance. That's option one. But do you have any questions?
Relative to the positions, these are just the salary numbers, correct, they're not?
These are act, these are actual people, right.
Right, they're people, but it's just, this is the salary component of the people, not, uh, any other benefits or.
Yeah, so we, we talked about it a little in committee on Monday about how it's, it's unlikely the agent of record would write us a new number based on. The number of changes to staffing, just like when we, if we added in a couple after the fact, they wouldn't rewrite it. Based on that because the pool is large enough that it likely changes very little, um. But that is a question I had asked Lou because I thought maybe there were some additional savings and benefits if you're, if you're, you know, nine staff short, but when you have a thousand. Or however many people we have in our, our healthcare plan, that's probably, that's de minimis, I would expect.
So, thank you for bringing that up, Josh, so I, I had a follow-up question, uh, Lou. I know that you mentioned that the twelve million dollars that we have in our budget for employee benefits. That included the insurance agent of record recommendation of nine point eight. And the other components were, again, um.
You have the statutory FICA and Medicare costs on the taxes.
And, and we've got the value of that, because I didn't see that in the, in the book, I saw the grand total, twelve. But I didn't know the breakout until you mentioned it earlier, so you got Medicare and any other components?
You have other benefit packages that are offered, you have term life insurance, there's disability insurances. There is, uh, the participation cost for the employee assistance plan. There is, uh. Uh, what else is there in there, it's a couple of other things, uh, smaller, um, items, management fees for the, uh. Defined contribution, uh, pension option, uh, management fees for the flexible spending account. That's kind of the package of things.
Yes, we have that all bundled under the one line item twelve. All right, um, all right, just to save me in the future, or just because I, I was struggling. Um, if in future budgets, if we could just have a, a quick note of that manner so that. Because I walked away after, I was jumping up and down for joy after Dr. Braverman and I went to the, uh, insurance agent and I went, wow, I, we, we just found two point six million bucks. So, you know, I'd, I'd love to have a, an understanding that it wasn't just healthcare. All right, thank you.
So before I go on to option two, it's, it's important to note that we talked about some other options in asking the council for, uh, an, um. Another appropriation, I believe it was Councilor Anis who, who, who began by asking for the, um. Six hundred and fifty or six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars for the, uh, John Wallace Phase Two project. To be transferred to our operating budget for salaries, that would have avoided all layoffs and it would have. Um, opened up your STEM academies as well, unfortunately, that didn't get passed. Um, we do have money for potholes and sidewalks. But we don't have money for salaries, so. Uh, I, I think some of these people would have, would have worked around the potholes, um, which might have been a good option, but it didn't work out that way for us. So that's, uh, that's why we're in this position right now.
Sorry, before you go on, we also, we talked about in committee, and maybe you can share, before you, the team. Looked at this, you even looked at, we looked at other things as well, the, increasing the walking distance, changing bus routes, we, I mean, we.
Right.
We did look at lots of different things.
That's why we, we took so long and we didn't want to make any emotional decisions on this, so we looked at absolutely everything, we looked at. We looked at our walking distances, we looked at trying to do neighborhood bus stops at our middle level. And, uh, that could have worked, the problem is you can't do that at the elementary level, so it wouldn't have saved you any money anyway. We looked at, uh, increasing our walking distances, we are, our walking distances are lower than all of our surrounding communities. So we looked at increasing that by a quarter of a mile to, to match theirs, that would have saved, um, maybe three buses. The problem there is, is we took us four years, I think, to get over the border skirmishes and folks in town are, are. Are pretty accustomed to the level of service, and I think that just would have made people really angry and, um. And, uh, would have caused a lot of problems and we'd probably spend the next four years in border skirmishes, again, trying to draw the lines and, and, and who we're picking up, who we're not picking up. So all of those things we, we looked at, closing the buildings at five o'clock like we did a few years ago, that, that just made people angry. Um, so, you know, it got down to. You just had to do it.
Josh.
Um, I, I, I also want to say that one of the things that in years past, when we've had to cut down budgets, the first place we look at is instructional materials because we value people over things. Um, at the, uh, for several years, we've been paring down and paring down and paring down. And when you presented your two point four nine, you cut out six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of instructional materials. So some of our, like, main subjects, I'm just flipping through, science K twelve has thirty six thousand dollars in instructional supplies.
Like a world language.
Um, world language has what, under ten thousand dollars?
I thought it was four thousand.
Four thousand, um, so, I mean, when we say we looked at everything, the one thing that was always easiest was to just blanket, cut out a bunch of instructional supplies. Hope that we can backfill it with health benefits money, but this year we've, you've already pared that down, so there is not a large cut that can be made. To the scale that we need.
That's how you got to the two point four nine percent.
Remember, I had to absorb a six hundred thousand dollar increase in special ed, so I cut it from instructional supplies. So I already did that, thinking I was going to have the five hundred and fifteen thousand in there for emergencies. Um, just didn't work out that way. So that's option one, option two is, is pretty much the same, only. We, what we did is we didn't lay off the, in this, in this, um, iteration, did not lay off the music, second music teacher. So that would allow us to, it would impact our music program, but it wouldn't. Uh, I want to say it wouldn't, we wouldn't, likely wouldn't have to defer from grade four to grade five, it, it would impact it, but not as badly. Again, we would have to have the music program really tell us, um, how they would do it. Uh, that is the big difference there, unfortunately, to get that dollar amount, we would have to lay off two more people. To do that.
So, if I may, uh, uh, option one, we've got four layoffs.
Yes.
Option two, we have five layoffs. And in the elementary level.
Right.
Okay, it's five, yes, sorry, yep.
At the elementary level.
One says no layoff.
Which would increase the.
Two at the elementary, right.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, we, the custodial maintenance position would only be deferred till August first, because it was an odd number.
So for anybody just listening to this, you just said that one music teacher equals two.
In this particular case.
In this particular, can you explain why that is?
The music teacher is a veteran teacher and is higher on the salary scale. And, um. Obviously. You're going to, uh, go to your elementary folks who are just in and are making, you know, they're making less than a dialer ride driver, so, um. You know, you don't get much of a saving, so you have to take two. That's why the additional, so would you increase your class sizes?
Mr. Schellman.
Yeah, so, uh, you know, I'll just say now that we're kind of comparing the two, um, when option one was the only option out there a week ago or so when we talked, um. My biggest hangup was on music teacher number two, um, and, and not because of the other things are so awful, but because Newington has always taught the whole child. Um, and I've been proud to say for five years that even when we're cutting budgets and paring down and having the lowest increases in twenty years. We haven't touched our music program, which is nationally recognized. Um, a, and I was incredibly disheartened that there would be that kind of impact on the program and. And don't think it's appropriate for any district to do that to its music program.
Agreed.
And when you look at the other option, um, I, you know, I still, and, and we talked about this on Monday in committee, um. You know, I still, I still believe that there's a way to do it with one elementary layoff rather than two, um. You know, I was hopeful that you'd be able to put something together and obviously, um, you weren't, um.
Not right now, things could change.
Right, right, um, and so, you know, I'm, I'm still not sure if I would trade a music teacher for an elementary teacher. I mean, it seems like a, a Sophie's Choice, um.
So can you explain how, why that could change or however, and it oftentimes it does, and so it's, it's really difficult because we're making a decision.
You're making a decision right now, as of today.
Now, and unfortunately, unfortunately, things could change for the better. And we might not, or the worst, and we might not need to take two elementary to save the.
I could get a resignation tomorrow. And, uh, somebody who's a veteran teacher.
You could save those.
And, right. So it's not shell moving or anything like that, it's just life events, as, as you call them, that happen. And, um, and we obviously would take advantage of that, you know, as soon as possible. We had talked the other day about kindergarten is where, you know, we would look right now, but. Um, I'm really skeptical about that because many times our kindergarten families don't register until either right before school starts. Or sometimes right after, and, um, they don't want to let the little ones go right away, you know? And, uh, so that typically happens, and that, as I shared with you all throughout the year. As I read the enrollment numbers, you, you saw what was projected, and we were eighty five students over projected. And the numbers never went down, they just went up. So I'm a little skeptical of those numbers to begin with, it's really hard to tell with kindergarten. Last year we had twenty three preschoolers who we thought were coming to our school district and they decided to stay in their magnet school.
Okay, but on the flip side. Now that, okay, so we're past the time where you had to do your budget. We factored in the breakage we knew about, what about some, like you just said, somebody could come tomorrow with a resignation, how, how would. Future breakage in the next two months be able to help us here or not? Help me understand.
Well, really, the next milestone is the last workday of the school year, which is June twenty. You know, you have the prerogative of retracting a layoff notice up until the time the person walks out the door. If they walk out the door without job assurance for September, they're eligible for unemployment all, all summer. Even if you give them that notice the day after school gets out on June twenty first, they basically would be able to collect the entire, uh, summertime. Not a staggering amount of money, but it's probably five thousand dollars that they would get, uh, as a result of that, that would have to be absorbed out of next year's budget as a starting point. You know, the circumstances of those events, you know, we're always watching, this is a constantly evolving process, remember from last year. We had over forty changes from when budget was adopted in April until when school started, August twenty ninth, uh, of last year. So it's not that it won't happen, but it doesn't always break your direction either, you know? Uh, you could have a person that also rescinds their resignation, their, I'm retiring and say, no, I've decided, I've had a life circumstance change where.
Right.
I'll be sticking around another year.
Right, no, and then that, that can certainly happen, but I've also seen it go the other way, and if, if some teachers are on the fence, know that. Some others may lose their job and they're on the fence and they're ready to make that decision. I'm just wondering if that break, if we could truly.
You can't count on it.
I know we can't count on it, I'm trying to see what the likelihood of it. I'm sorry?
We can act on it very quickly if it does happen.
Right.
Before June.
Twenty, before the last day of school.
Thank you.
Right.
Mr. Schellman.
But i- is it accurate that in practical reality tomorrow, the teachers that. That the, the layoffs, whatever we decide, they're going to be notified in the next day or two?
Well, that's why I was hoping that the board would make a decision tonight so that I could, I could let. Forty something people know that there's nothing to worry about, uh, because we had to give out forty.
And the other, they start looking for.
We would call them in and we would, we would sit them down and explain it to them personally.
And the, and the practical reality is that some of those teachers may find other positions immediately.
They may.
Even, even if a week from now there, something happens that was only three or four instead of four or five, that we may lose that person anyway.
Right.
But there is a shot that they could be, things could change.
Right, but we would still notify hopefully tomorrow.
Correct, I understand that, no, we have to, we would have to, we would have to, but.
To keep them waiting another two weeks.
No, no, but, but again, there's, it's only May tenth, we've got about a month.
Right.
Okay, Josh.
I don't know if this is a question for Steve, but in option two with two elementary, if it was actually two elementary layoffs and we weren't able to keep one of them through events or whatever, what kind of impact do you foresee that having on class sizes? Or is it, is it, I'm probably going to answer, but is it unknown because we're not sure what kindergarten's going to look like?
So right, that's always the unknown there. But in general, I would tell you that with the numbers that we have, you were looking at numbers at anywhere between 23 and 25 in a class.
With one layoff, or...
That would be with the two, with the two.
When you say in, in a class, in every elementary class, or at what levels?
Grade, in two grade levels at two different schools?
Wherever we take it.
So a grade level in a school would increase to 22 to 25 from its 19 to 21, is that around where we are?
Correct.
In whichever grade level it came out of, it would have the same impact pretty much?
Would the principal make the decision of how, which grade level to...
We work collaboratively on that.
Okay, all right. It's tough, you know, when you, you're right, when you get down to the music program, you know, we're scraping.
Mr. Schellman.
I'm still not sure which of these options I'm fully in favor of. I know one thing about option one is that the impact that would have on the music program, I, I am fairly confident the music program wouldn't recover to the level it is at now from then because no matter what happens with the amount of money we get in the budget next year, number one priority is going to be adding back class size reduction teachers because our class sizes, we could already use class size reduction teachers. So to think about taking away two of the music teachers from the elementary and/or middle level, you know, it just makes me think that, that we will not recover from there. And, and in my opinion, it's easier because the board has done it before in the...
Add back the class size reduction teachers.
Has added in class size reduction.
We've done that on a pretty regular basis, I agree.
You know, I haven't seen us add back anything, anything else. Like the gifted program we lost, that's gone. That's not, that's not even the remotest possibility of bringing back at this point and isn't in the future. So that concerns me a great deal with option one.
And remember, you're already starting, you're not starting at zero next year, you're starting at 1.73. So if you add in your, your, you know, your, your other obligations, you know, you're already at close to five. And then if you wanted to put anything back, you're seven?
Jane.
Well, I think we should get a feel if we're going to vote tonight. And I agree with Mr. Schellman, yes, neither one is wonderful, but I don't want to impact the music program like that. We're nationally recognized, we're doing so well. I, I don't want to, you know, go after something that is one of our gems. And I, I think it's easier to take steps afterwards with option number two.
And we would already be impacting the music program, correct me if I'm wrong, because we would have a veteran teacher who's resigning that we're not going to replace.
Right.
So we are impacting the music program. So it's that we wouldn't be impacting the music program.
To that extent.
To that extent, right?
The only risk you run is this would put, let's say your kindergarten class is at 20, 21 now. That's what nobody walking, that's not anticipating anybody new walking in the door. So you could be looking at kindergarten classes of 24.
Or the building principal and you guys decide to shift to another grade level.
You're right. All depends on where they move, what school they move into. You may be looking at emergency redistricting. I mean, all of those things because there's really no breathing room anymore.
So in looking at what you guys just said about the music program, I think that two, two positions out of a small department is devastating. It is a nationally recognized program. I, you said it earlier, Josh, that you believe in educating the whole child, and I am definitely an advocate for that. There's kids in our school district who the thing they have going for them is music. And to, I feel like we're taking that away from some of those kids, some of the opportunities for them, finding something at elementary school. It's much harder to get kids interested when they move up to the middle school. It's harder to get them to take those risks to try something new at that point, I think is, that's really hard for me to consider. I do not like the other option either. I, having big class sizes is a huge problem. Like you guys were saying though, having, it's a lot harder to put music back in, and, and that's something that's really, really important to a lot of, a lot of students in our school district. There's so many kids that do participate in that program that it affects all of our students. So having that impact, that's...
I just want to remind you, I mean, we originally, the CIP committee, we have two board members on it. There was a million dollars for Phase Two John Wallace. The town council split that into 350 and 650, you know, round numbers. And so that means I can't do John Wallace, and we have $350,000 or so for potholes and sidewalks.
And we did ask that that be, we asked if we could use that money since it was already earmarked. And they were already going to spend it on the board or what the board's needs were. We said, okay, we really need it in our operating budget to pay for salaries. But they said no.
So we can't even use it for Phase Two. It's not enough to do Phase Two, so that 600 and something thousand dollars is just going to sit there in an account while we're, we're laying off people. It just doesn't make any sense, but there's nothing we can do. The council does appropriate your, your, your bottom line.
Dr. Braverman.
I love music completely, totally, but if I were a parent with kids in the school, I think I'd rather give up a music teacher who comes in once or twice a week than have my first or second grade class or kindergarten class be increased by too large than what we think is educationally sound. That's, so I would, I guess I'd be on virgin one because it's one less teacher.
I'm, I'm looking, I'm with Dr. Braverman's perspective on that. I, I would prefer to have...
I think you mean option, I think based on what you're saying, you mean option two.
No.
No, one has four.
Option one has four layoffs.
Four teachers and five...
Oh, you said, right, so you weren't, you'd be taking the music teacher, yes, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 you're right, I'm sorry. Sorry.
I mean, they're all horrible choices.
Right.
Yeah, this is ridiculous.
I had, I had two points. I, I wanted to say to your point about the money for Wallace Phase Two. In fairness to the town council, they are likely viewing that as a down payment towards what they would put in next year when we can actually use the money. So, you know, point, point, point taken, and they don't want the hole in their budgets, they leave it in ours. And, you know, but obviously, point taken. I, I would also say to Jane's query about voting tonight, my opinion is that we, we should vote tonight, mainly because I think we owe it to our staff to end this limbo and to let them know. And I also don't think these options will change very much over the next two weeks. I think this is, we've, we've talked about where else it could come from. My opinion is still that in option two, the second elementary teacher layoff is not necessary in that they're from a further deferral of custodians and a, a cut of like 20, 15 to $20,000 somewhere else that we could backfill on some, some other way. And that, and that's my opinion, and I'd be much more comfortable with, with that option in that way.
It could happen, but we...
And, yeah.
I agree.
I understand that obviously you would let that second elementary teacher know.
Now.
To now.
And I would hope for life events before June 20.
Right, who knows in the next two weeks, and you could, you know...
It's happened.
Come back to you in two weeks and say, look...
It's happened, it's happened.
I'm with Josh. I have no issue about making a decision this evening about, or at least voting on an option.
So I think, Emily, you're the one who's...
I agree with that theory wholeheartedly. It's a very difficult decision to make. But I agree that it's, as bad as it is, it would be worse to keep people in limbo longer than we need to. So I guess we should vote.
So how do you want to do this? You want to do option one, option two, vote on it, or...
Yeah, I mean, we can all just say which option we prefer and hopefully it's not 3-3.
Right.
I'm still...
Because I don't know, I don't know what we do in that scenario.
We discuss it more.
I guess, yeah.
Hang on one second.
So at the end of, yeah, we're, we're still in discussion on the amended motion. And so once we all say option one or two, that becomes the option, that is the superintendent's option, and then we vote, we should then vote unanimously to pass the motion because that's just cutting the money in the way that the six of us has decided it should be done.
I, I'm voting for option two, but I'm leaning towards option two, but amended.
Option two A.
With, with magic. I'm voting for option two with magic. I'm pretending that the bottom part doesn't exist.
My wand is in the cart.
I, I, you know what, I, I told someone else on Monday that I, I would not do it, but I would vote for option two, amending it to defer the custodial maintenance till whatever it is in the first one, October 15th for that additional $13,000, and then pull 20,000 out of the, or commit 20,000 more in the non-lapsing fund to that position. And I, I spoke very strongly against that the last time, but I think that way we don't have to lay off the second elementary teacher. It puts us in a bigger hole for special ed and maintenance.
We're so far in, I mean, you're, again, you're talking things and people.
What is 20,000 potentially?
And if it's another job saved, I'm for that.
You're very, very, very tight.
I, I know, I know, but that's the way I'm leaning to.
I know, I know you clearly don't.
It wasn't an option.
Yeah, so I...
Sorry, we just made it one.
Well, so along that line...
Can I have input from, I'm sorry, I just wanted to lose, lose input because Dr. Collins is clearly very nervous about that. But I, I mean, we know there's going to be life events that'll fill in that $20,000 for sure.
We hope.
We hope.
There, over the next like 12 months, there will be.
He's like, none of you are listening to us.
I'm the special ed side.
Okay.
Going back to your budget that was presented that we've been using as the foundation for the actions, the gross tuition is $3,267,000 with an offset in the plan of $600,000 for the excess cost grant from the state. So the net number that you see in your budget is $2,667,000. As of the other day, our gross cost forecast for next year was $3,704,000 for tuitions. And we have no assurance of anything when it comes to excess costs from the state because of their budget condition. The hedge that we have of recommending to go back up to $600,000 covers two-thirds of the gap. So you still have a potential, if the state wipes out the excess cost grants in its entirety, you have, you still have an additional...
What is the likelihood that they would wipe out the excess cost grant entirely?
I can't see that happening.
I shouldn't see that happening.
But they could cut it in half as one of...
Okay, so we've, we've modified two, two thirds of that gap in case.
Right, so June 7th, June 8th, whatever day the general assembly is supposed to take action and pass their budget is the first date of clarity. You'll know if some of it, all of it survives, where you can reassess your special ed condition at that point and certainly take action again of if it's favorable, you may be okay. If it's unfavorable, you still have risk that's there going into next year. So in trying to split the difference of trying to steer a prudent course, it's not always, it's very easy to be reactionary and say, oh, you know, everything's going to fall apart. We have to guard against the absolute worst case scenario that's here. Would be, you know, additionally devastating, you know, if we had to go another $300,000 of staffing cuts this year.
Right, and honestly, one of my, one of my biggest fears is I've got $310,000 worth of unpaid magnet school tuition bills on my desk right now. My biggest fear is, you know, these academies aren't opening and people are, are going to take those options. And we were there one time, we had 262 kids, I think, enrolled, and we opened up the middle school academies, brought it down significantly. I have, just have this fear that, you know, that people are going to take advantage of that option because...
Well, listen, we, we, we're not able to open them right now.
Right.
We are going to open them in the future, that is our hope. We, there are classes that some of the kids are going to be able to take that will kind of be placeholders to help them, especially on the biomedical side. I know it's going to be very difficult for the aerospace and engineering side, but I would hope that people would...
My hope.
Hang in there and hope that we can find a way next year to make it happen. But I, I hear you, I hear your point.
Yeah, that's, that's what makes me nervous.
So then, sorry. Is our option a revised option with one less layoff for number two?
And then we really only have that?
According to half of the table, it is, and the other half, no.
It's a labor management dispute right now.
Worst case scenario, Lou, if the state says, hey, no money, we have to come up with how much more?
As the tuition forecast we had several days ago, it would be around an additional $300,000.
Expenditure that we would be responsible for because we're not getting as much of a refund from...
Right, there's no circuit breaker grant anymore.
There's no, okay.
And to your earlier point, that would potentially be a time where the town council would get a letter from the chair saying, the state just changed the law and we lost 600K, not 300K, so...
Right, I can expect...
And nothing that we're doing tonight could possibly prevent that.
Correct, right. That's an unknown event, we'd have to just walk on it, all right.
Well...
So in, in option three, adjustment, adjustment five would be reverse use of 181, 176. And adjustment 18 would look the same as on option one, deferring custodial maintenance.
All right, start, start over, start over.
Yeah, whoa, whoa, whoa.
So adjustment, so essentially what happened is adjustment five on option two.
You're an absolute...
We can't do that, I mean, we're, I'm, I'm already over 300, I mean, 200 isn't even...
And I'm, and I'm only adding on 19, 824.
Oh my God.
So in option...
So wait, what about from where, non-lapse?
So instead of reversing the use of $200,000, which is reserved for that special ed,
You're going to go to 19.
It would reserve 181, 176. Then, then adjustment 19, elementary teacher number two would be crossed off. Adjustment at the bottom, which should say 20, would mimic the first option, which would be deferring the maintenance till October 15th for $17,025 instead of $4,062.
And I just want to, again, just, I know I'm beating that horse here, but the cost went up 300,000 and we're only reversing 200,000. So we've already gambled on 100,000. So gambling on 119,000 is what I'm hearing?
I personally feel better about that than...
Oh, I'm glad.
Either of the other ones.
Yeah, I know, because you know what, I know...
I, I do.
But Josh, under that one, we're just saving one element, one elementary position. We're still having to lay off one element.
Still laying off one elementary position.
We still have to lay off, so now you're...
But we're not laying off a music teacher, is essentially the trade.
So basically, both options are at four layoffs, is that correct, if we did it this way?
And option, the other option would be we may not be able to pay our bills, just saying.
But I mean, both options are potentially saying that.
All of these options are, all of them are. We don't know about that, I mean, there's so much unknown here.
But my thought is that the potential of saving a music teacher for two elementary teachers is far less palatable than...
One.
One, with a little extra risk in.
I also think not filling potholes is...
Yeah, well, who's going to go back and ask for that CIP money again?
I would, I would, I would still lean towards option one, roll the dice on the life events with a prayer that we have enough life events that possibly we don't need to. But in the discussions, you're going to... but in the discussions you're going to be having, the individual will probably need to be aware of, okay, I'm sorry.
Option one is the music.
Is the music.
You, you're for that?
I'm, I'm, yeah, as far as the numbers and such, I'm, I just don't feel comfortable even at increasing any elementary class level beyond what is necessary. So that, because I just believe that that's where our focus needs to be, at the elementary level, and as they get towards the higher levels of grades, you know, in my mind, I'm getting them ready for chem one oh one and have ninety in the classroom. But I know that, in my heart, I'm saying the focus at elementary level is to stay as small of a class size as we can. So I'm going to still stay option one.
Just jump back in for a second. When you were talking a moment ago about there only being a one hundred thousand dollar gap, you know, right now, we're at five hundred thousand for the gap. By doing adjustment number five, we'll bring it down to three hundred. If the board chooses to accept the modified motion, you're just increasing that up to around three hundred eighteen thousand dollars. So just, so everybody's clear on what they...
You're increasing it from what to what?
Three hundred, it would be around three hundred thousand, and Josh's motion to...
What's increasing, what do you, I don't understand what you're saying, is going to three hundred thousand?
Okay. Right now, we have four hundred thousand dollars earmarked as the risk pool for special ed.
Yep.
That's out of the non-lapsing fund. The gap is nine hundred thousand in the special ed tuition at this point, without considering the excess cost grant, that's just off the table. Okay, so in looking to move it up from four hundred thousand to six hundred thousand would be adjustment number five.
Right, that's what we, we are on agreement of.
Three hundred thousand beyond that, even if that motion passes, the gap is still three hundred thousand.
Right.
It's not going three hundred thousand to one hundred thousand.
Right.
Just make sure everybody's...
Okay.
Right, right.
Yes, yes, yes. All right, so we've got option one as it is, we've got option two as it is, and I think we have a two A.
I hear that.
I need Josh to just explain two A one more time, the, where, how the money is going to go.
So, adjustment five is where we put two hundred grand towards those special ed costs.
Yep.
Instead of two hundred thousand, it would be, and I'm just doing a lot of mental math, it would be a hundred eighty-one thousand, a hundred eighty thousand, one hundred seventy-six dollars.
And that's because you're taking...
So it's, so it's a savings there of nineteen, because we're, we're leaving nineteen thousand dollars in our regular, instead of the non-lapsing fund, is that right?
Nineteen thousand towards that teacher's salary.
Towards that teacher's salary.
Got it, okay.
Then, the, the last item, deferring custodial maintenance, instead of...
Do that longer.
Do it longer, so that it's the October 15th on option one for seventeen thousand twenty-five dollars, which is thirteen thousand and change.
So that position is...
Which equals, then those two numbers equal elementary teacher number two.
Right, so you're, you're covering the thirty-three thousand that we would have...
Covering the thirty-three thousand that you would save by laying off a teacher, which is net of unemployment.
Right.
Lou, what are the exact numbers?
Right, so you've got, you've got seventeen thousand twenty-five for extending the deferral of the custodial.
Right, so that's, that's like thirteen, that's thirteen nine thirty-six, it's nine sixty-three.
That, okay, that adds thirteen.
Twelve? Oh, I did math wrong, so one seventy-nine, one seventy-six?
Do the math, just do the math.
I was off by a thousand.
So, the objective is to reclaim adjustment number nineteen, which is thirty-three seven eight seven.
Could you turn your mic on?
If the objective is to reclaim, in turn, adjustment number nineteen to a zero...
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three, seven, eighty-seven.
Correct.
The increase of the deferral on the custodial, custodial maintenance position is twelve thousand nine sixty-three. So that leaves twenty thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars that has to come off of the...
Item five.
Adjustment number five.
Okay, wait a minute, why does it have to, why do we have to do that? Why can't we defer this custodial position for the entire year? Where does that get us?
That, if we went for the other, that would be adding about four months of time to October four, October 15th, so November, December, mid-February.
Okay, and I, I'm more comfortable with that, because then you would be more comfortable with the money being left for special education.
But probably less comfortable with how our schools look.
Yeah, I don't want to hear you complaining about...
I don't care, I'm, I'm better with that. Anybody else?
So the suggestion is defer custodial for a full year?
Not a full year, he said we would have to go till February.
February.
And we'd get the money without having to decrease the, I'm sorry, increase the amount we... What am I trying to say?
Right, well, the coverage then becomes an overtime issue for us, you know, that we'd have to factor in. You know, we've been holding...
So go over, so go to March and get your overtime. So then go another month and you got your overtime back.
That's what we'd have to be.
Well, it's a gamble, so we may, we may, it may be a moot point, it could be.
Right, and, and my point was going to be that using adjustment five, the money in the non-lapsing fund as a placeholder, is probably easier because those bills come at the end. A lot of the, like, you are paying them, but then, towards the end of the year is when the crunch would come, and it, you, when the, when the money freed up, if it did through life events, you'd be able to bring back custodial person whenever you had it, I assume is what you would do. I mean, so I think it's probably six of one, half a dozen of the other, at some point.
What I'm more comfortable with.
Okay, so what is adjustment number five, what is the number?
We're leaving it.
It needs to go down twenty thousand eight hundred twenty, or you were going to leave adjustment five as a...
No, we're going to leave it. I, I, I'm up for leaving it.
We can leave it and just defer custodial.
Leave it and defer the custodial longer. That was my suggestion, is that okay?
Right, so that becomes...
So what is, what is eighteen, Lou?
So we could defer, we would just say defer custodial maintenance for...
That'll become thirty-seven, eight, forty-nine.
Thirty-seven be forty-nine?
Three-seven, eight, four-nine would be that cut. As, what is this number eighteen? Number nineteen goes to zero. Just add the two together.
Okay.
That's easier.
And you're leaving, right, you're leaving number five?
Yeah, leave it alone.
Leaving it alone. Okay. So that's option two A.
Two A.
Two A.
Hooray, two A.
All right.
Better about two A?
So, in my observations of body language, Dr. Collins didn't seem comfortable with two A.
Well, I'm going to have to be. Well, I just don't want, I just want to make sure that people, you know...
Aren't you slightly more comfortable?
Juggling, yeah, well, I know, I want to pay our bills, you know, first. But also, parents have, as we know, have a very high expectation of the way our buildings look. So I want to, if they slip a little bit, I want to get some slack here.
I think our parents have a lot of high expectations all around, and we are doing the best we can with what we have, and it's going to have to be the best we can.
I, I just want to be clear, I mean, the, the, and I don't want to be crass, but I mean, the little boys, the first graders are going to pee on the wall again, and it's going to take the paint off, you know.
Well, custodials don't paint, do they?
Well, custodial maintenance, well, I mean, it comes, it's all one count. So, I mean, takes people to do it, yeah.
Again, we're talking about custodial and maintenance versus a teacher, I, I...
Right, yeah, yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm good there.
And a person we have versus a person we don't, because the position's open right now.
Correct, yes, exactly.
Okay, that I'm coming, right, okay.
All right, so how do, okay.
I'm sold on two A.
How are we? Let's get a pulse.
Yeah, I mean, I hate it, but I hate it less than...
Hate it less than the others.
Less, yeah, I, I think.
Wait, where are we? We have to vote on the motion which we amended to reduce, reduction to four nineteen nine one three, and then...
That's it.
Yeah, that's it, okay, let's, so we have to...
We've given directive to the superintendent of what we prefer, and he will do that based on what happens over the next...
I think we have to vote on the option.
Well, no, you just told me what it was.
Our motion just says based on superintendent's recommendation.
Okay.
And apparently I just recommended two A.
You're recommending that over the six of us are in favor of, essentially, yeah.
We're just voting on the amended motion at this point.
Which was the amount of money that we were taking the total budget down by, right, Lou?
Right, because we took...
And we haven't changed that.
Right.
So, the motion's been...
We should, just to make sure, is everyone, is the majority of the six of us in favor of the two A?
I think we all are.
Are we all in agreement that that's the...
Yeah, I mean, it's still the same number of a reduction, it's just a matter of how you approach.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
Okay, so let's vote.
Exactly, we all are. All right, so we've made the, go ahead, what have we done?
We've, we made a motion, we amended it.
Yep, we amended the motion.
So everyone unanimously voted to amend the motion, so now we have the amended motion pending, and we have to vote on that.
Okay. And we already discussed it at length, so all those in favor, aye, motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Oh my, okay, wait a minute, I do want to summarize, if you want to go to the next page. I think this is important. So, Dr. Collins kind of went over everything at the beginning that we, where we were at and what the impact was for the 2016, 2017 budget, and I just want to go over kind of what we're looking at right now for the seventeen, eighteen impact. We are, again, adding to our list of unfilled positions. I, I think people, again, said to us, you know, you threatened layoffs last year, and then you didn't really have to lay anybody off. Yes, we did, we laid off administrators, we laid off a teacher, we had, I think it was up to the webmaster, and then we had five or six, five unfilled positions. So those are people that we once had, just the year before in the school year, that we don't have again. Nine, I think it was nine total. Okay, so then you've got this year, we have five unfilled positions, that's going to impact class size. You've got, we're right now at four layoffs, that's going to impact class size. We've got two elementary instructional coaches that would be moving to teaching positions to help us with the class size.
And I would, I would just add that that's, that's what people love to harp on, that's an administrative cost, essentially, that they're not classroom teachers.
Right, so you're helping on the classroom teacher side, but then you're adding to the workload of, of everything else that they used to do, so things are going to fall back on the principals and, and other leaders in the building. We have our high school STEM academies that will not be open, and we have three hundred and fifty students impacted. Those were students that had signed up to take courses. We've got a potential budget hole that's pretty steep of over a million dollars to start next year. We've lost our NEA S and C accreditation at the elementary and middle schools, and that's a voluntary loss. I mean, we chose to not pay for that as part of this budget process. We've impacted elementary instrumental music, not to the level originally discussed, but again, we have a position that's retiring that we're not filling. We do have increased class sizes at the elementary level, we've got some delayed curriculum implementation, we still have the purchase of instructional materials that Dr. Collins originally cut out of the budget to get to the two point four nine percent. We've got, you know, things we've already talked about, our bus program, our technology plan, the funding that we need for middle school social workers, so we have a lot of things that we haven't been able to address. So I just want that impact to be out there. I was at the John Wallace PAC meeting the other night, and they asked, you know, they asked for more information, they wanted to know what programs specifically were being impacted. They said they needed more information, they wanted to know what they could do. They, they specifically asked what meetings they should be at, board of ed meetings, town council meetings, who do they need to write to, what do they need to do. So we said that we would get as much information out there as possible. Okay, that being said, F, public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities, if anybody from our public would like to come forward and speak, or if anybody would like to call in, our phone number is eight six zero six six five eight seven three six. I know somebody called in a couple of minutes ago, if she's still watching and wants to call in now during public participation, we would appreciate it.
Is she calling?
No, not yet, go ahead. Go ahead, do you mind holding, okay.
Hello, you're on with the board.
Hi, this is Dawn Alavera, and I've been watching your discussions about your, the options for, you just voted on the budget. I didn't get the conversation about how the town council voted that you were not able to move money from the, dedicated to improving sidewalks and potholes.
Yes, CIP account.
Yeah.
That was a request that was made to the town council that we use CIP money to fund our operating budget, and it was voted down five to four.
By the council, you mean?
Yes.
Not the board?
Right, right.
Okay, so the board of ed and your body of government from the town, you don't have a way that you can transfer that money on your own? Is it dictated by the charter for the town?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, that's very unfortunate. I'm sad to hear that you just finished the construction for the STEM academies at the high school, and yet again, there's not going to be a teacher. And is a layoff for the elementary level at Inna Reynolds?
It hasn't been determined yet, right.
Oh. Okay, well, I really hope that it's not Inna Reynolds.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, have a good night, bye.
Anybody else from the public wishing to come forward? Oh, sorry, Dana, sorry, I'm tired. No, you're not, it was a bright color.
I bet you are got tired. Dana Havens, one thirteen Stoddard Avenue. So what you just voted on, two A, is that way approved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I just kind of wish, especially because I know Forrest wanted to speak, I wanted to speak, that like, I was holding up a sign hoping you could see it, because I don't think the public can say point of order. But, you know, you, you made some assumptions that I don't necessarily agree with, with what parents would feel, and I wish that maybe we had a chance to speak before you actually made this vote that affects us and our children. So that being said, I'll just say my spiel anyways. You talked about changing the walking distance and saying it would upset a lot of people. I would say as a parent, I'd be more upset if my classes, my children's classrooms got larger than I would if they had to walk further. I mean, we all realize, you know, the state is a disaster, the country is not doing so great. We realize that sacrifices need to be made, and to me, I would so much rather my kid walk a little further, and they are walkers, so I could say this truthfully, that they walk a little further than lose a music teacher, or have too many kids in their class that they get lost. And then, also, you said it would save three buses. Now, I remember all the hubbub about buses in the past, that's like three hundred thousand dollars. It, it just seems that, to me, that would have been a no-brainer, and I think you should have given us a little more credit or a chance to speak. You know, I, I just feel like I don't get to have any input on how this goes, or we didn't get a chance to, not that many of us showed up. There'll be plenty of us on Facebook, I'm sure, later, but, what else did I want to say? And I'm just curious as why you would not go forward with the STEM at the high school level, and maybe bring it back, dial it back more at the middle school level? It seems to me that STEM programs would be more important at the high school level, because I think kids are a little bit more attuned as to which way they're going to go in their career, hopefully, because we all know that once you get to college, sometimes you switch majors a year and a half or two in. Just in my opinion, I think the monies for STEM should really be more at the upper level than at the lower level. And that's it. Thanks. Thanks.
Hi, Forrest Helvey, two eighty-two Limply Leder Lane. So my frustrations probably have a lot less to do with this board instead of choices that another body made. It's frustrating because I look at, you know, different districts in our DRG and they're looking at it between two and three percent, you know, budgets, which is basically what you were asking for. So that's, that's aggravating, especially when I sit and think about, we had the strategic planning last Friday, listen to all the great things that people are doing, looking at the kids tonight and, you know, one of the questions that came up was, are we making our kids competitive for an international, you know, world? And kinda sounds like we are trying to do that. We have some of these kids who are placing nationally, we're doing that. But, you know, if I know my, my basic accounting, you can't get more from less. You know, I can never get three, you know, with one plus one, it just doesn't work. I will only ever get two. If I can only ever make eight thousand a month, if I keep spending ten, I'm gonna run a deficit, you know? So I think is the more that we keep bleeding, you know, our education system, the less we're gonna get. And no matter how hard our teachers try, no matter how hard the principals and the supervisors are working, it's just not gonna happen, you know? So anyhow, but again, that's, I'm preaching to the choir at this point. The only things I'm thinking is that, I understand that you're gonna have to have a few very difficult discussions tomorrow, but on the flip side, you know, until June first hits and that lasts, or the, you know, until the end of a school hits and the teacher leaves for the last day, there's still hopefully some wiggle room. And this is gonna sound really naive on my part, so I don't know the rules of it so much. You know, I know we have a choice and this probably will be very unpopular with a lot of parents. I was, you know, I was a public school kid, so I don't really see the need to send my kids off to, to magnets and choice schools. Now, I do know we have a minimum amount of seats that we need to have kids coming in so that we're then gonna have to send out that same number of students. Why aren't we turning off the faucet after that minimum number's hit? If that's costing us so much money, if we're losing twenty-three kids, you know, why don't we put the kibosh on that? I mean, if, what recourse do we have to pursue that? Again, I know people like those options and again, I'm seeing some heads shaking, so it's a no, we can't do this. You know, it's, then if we can't do that at another level, what are we doing to prevent them from leaving, make them want to stay? I mean, that's a cost savings, you know? If I'm losing, you know, you know, my windows are open and I'm heating the outdoors, then I probably need to learn how to shut some windows or find some more cost-efficient ways of keeping the heat in. What are we doing there? You know? And, and the last thing I'm, I'm just curious about, you know, is if, if the tenor is that we're not going to be fiscally prudent and work on saving our money. You know, Mr. Sylvia, you mentioned that if we, we have the option to go to the town council and say, "Look, we were as strapped as possible, we have outstanding funds, why don't we pay for all of our teachers, make sure that our class sizes don't increase" and then say, "Town council, we have a bill, you did not afford us enough." Looking at our neighbors, which I know I heard a lot, "You have a bill to pay because we can't keep bringing in new families." I'm sitting on the phone chatting with a couple people who are dual-income, who will bring in nice amount of taxes. They're looking at our DRGs, not at our district, for that very reason. Because, again, I teach college classes and I have the luxury of not teaching classes of twenty-five. My second grade son, so just to clarify, second graders have class sizes of twenty-four and twenty-five. He doesn't have that luxury, his teacher doesn't have that luxury. And that is scaring off potential homebuyers in very nice areas that are gonna be good taxpayers. Only us. We don't pick homes based on the way a town council or town hall looks. We buy based on our schools. That's what brings us in. And that's also what makes us think, maybe we need to move. So, maybe it's time to pay for our teachers, keep those class sizes and then go send a bill to the town council. You know, yes, it's a miserable outlook, I get it. Why is it that Weathersfield and Berlin can fund their districts? We can't, I, I don't understand that. But it's a shame, because those are the districts that I know my friends are looking at right now. So, anyhow, thank you so much for the work that you're doing, good luck tomorrow, that, I don't envy you. But, again, thanks.
Thank you, anybody else from the public wishing to come forward? Okay. Seeing nobody on the phone and nobody else from the public, I, oh, sorry, we'll go to remarks by board members. I think you've heard from everybody, but Dr. Braverman?
I think I'm good.
Okay.
This is an exhausting meeting.
Emily?
Once again, I think that the kids that came and spoke tonight were amazing and I think they, I hope that a lot of people from the public were watching just to see the amazing things that are happening in the schools and the, and the ways that these kids are getting experiences that I never would've dreamed of when I was the same age. I was really impressed with them and, and all of the great exposure that, or the great, I don't know, they're giving us an even better reputation, so I'm very proud of that. The decision that we made tonight, I feel like two A was our best choice, but I feel like they were all terrible choices, I'm not comfortable with any of it. It was, I really wanna see the schools flourishing. I wanna continue to offer our kids the best that we can because everybody knows that the way the world is right now, they really need that just to, to find their way out there because it's very, very competitive. So I want to be able to give that to them, they're, you know, they're our future. So if we short-change them, it will only come back to us later on. So, yeah, I guess, in conclusion, this stinks.
My mind immediately started racing about the consideration of the walking distance they brought up about, by Ms. Havens. Three buses is five percent of our inventory.
Well, we already own the buses, so you wouldn't be...
Correct, so I'm looking at the operating expenses that are associated with the sixty bus fleet. And I'm, I'm being optimistic, I don't know how many of the sixty are actually en route at a given day.
Mr. Sylvia, would you mind hanging on?
Absolutely, not a problem.
Hello, you're on with the board. Sorry, go ahead.
The, the mathematics in my mind was running around that I, I don't know how many of the fleet is on the road on a given school day and how many are...
Yesterday, I, I listened to them talk on the radio, we didn't have one spare bus in the yard, not one.
So all sixty are on...
Well, they were all either being, out being repaired or on the road.
Okay, so...
Not one bus we had yesterday.
One spare, so...
No, we had none, we had none.
No, no scars.
The driver who had a problem with her signal light and he said, "I have no spare buses to give you, so you need to come back to the yard" and he had to fix it.
Okay, so where my mind is going is this, in the scheduling of our buses, do we intend to have any spares or do we have all six?
No, we, we do. All right, we have, we have, we have spares.
Right, so I'm, I'm, what I'm trying to get to is, is that on a given school day, let's say we have fifty-five of the sixty buses and we have five spares. I don't know the numbers of, of what Mr. Avery has, but what was going through when I'm looking on the operating expenses, I think it's worthwhile, Lou, if, if it's possible, that if we did consider expanding and we could eliminate three buses and, and say it's of the sixty, that's five percent. And I come in and I'm looking at the operating expenses, the reduction of the five percent would provide us with some additional teachers. And, and I know you mentioned earlier that it would, it might make our residents angry.
Well, the only reason I can say, a good, good part of my job in the months of August, September and October is transportation. And the, the number of people who want exceptions and who complain about walking distances and especially when it gets, I mean, I get inundated with calls, I mean, it's constant over walking distances. And everybody wants an exception and everybody wants to be picked up at their house. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm judging by the number of, I don't wanna say complaints I get, but requests for exceptions. I mean, and the last time we did it, it took us four years to even out, Lou was out there with a little wheel measuring walking distances to, to, you know, to settle the border skirmishes. And it, it was painful. But the board made a choice at that time to reduce them because of the number of concerns and complaints that were, were happening. Just on, on Willard Avenue, over by Clem Lamier, the whole sidewalk situation and having the kids cross the street two or three times to get to school. I mean, I'd rather just put them all on a bus, to be honest with you.
Well, that, what was racing through my mind fundamentally, Dr. Collins, was is that I don't know if it's worth us doing an analysis of if we, if those three buses that you mentioned were three routes that could be saved?
I don't know that it's three, we, we, we would have to look at it, I don't know. I'm, you know, we threw that number out there.
And then the second thought that Ms. Havens brought up, what opportunities do we have to reassign our existing STEM teachers at the middle school level to the high school level?
The problem there with the, that was a good point. The reason we began the STEM program at the middle level was because they needed the, the advanced math and science earlier so that they could get to the advanced courses at the high school. So they're already taking a lot of their algebra and geometry and, and biology and all that at the middle. So they're coming to the high school with a very different skill set. The program at the high school was designed to do two things. It was designed to take advantage of those kids who were coming up from the middle level, who were at the advanced level. And it was also designed to take advantage of those kids who either didn't get into the academy at the middle level or didn't want to take it and just wanna take it as an elective at the beginner level, so to speak, in ninth grade. So you would essentially not be able to get them to the higher level coursework needed. I mean, we're talking about sequencing genes at Newington High School. You can't do that starting in ninth grade, you have to start in seventh grade. So that's why we did it that way. And what those kids are doing in seventh and eighth grade is, is mind-boggling. I mean, we're so far advanced with regard to other school districts. I mean, it's just incredible with the, with the work that they're doing down there.
If I can just jump in on top of that, one other factor that has to be recognized is students that are in the STEM academies, those are actually regular homerooms or is really part of the whole grade level. So if you close the program down, you would have to add a classroom teacher at the levels to pick up maybe two more there.
Kids are still there.
Yeah, you still have it, you don't, you can't get away.
No, I appreciate the discussion. I, it's sort of like my asking of other opportunities that were not opportunities, but I, I do thank you for the additional conversation. The, and then the gentleman that came up, I know it's irresponsible for us to play with a budget that's not obtainable and then go to the town council with a bill. That's, but it's awful tempting. Having said that, asking the town council to take the risk of not ha, us not having enough life events or whatever occurring. But that, that's it, thank you.
Right, I don't have a sixteen million dollar fund balance that I can dip into if I have a, you know, a problem.
Mr. Shaw?
First, I guess, to those four staff members who are gonna be laid off, thank you so much for the time you spent in town. Hopefully, you find a good job, a great fit elsewhere, unfortunately for us, but hopefully that leads to a lot of success for you personally. To Nancy and the administration, I thought you guys did an excellent job pairing down what the district needed and communicating that effectively for the entire year, truly, to the town council. So there was a ton of work that you guys have done, so I think you did a great job. And I did mention earlier, I will not be at our next board meeting on the twenty-fourth, I'll be out of the country. I am proxy voting no on the use of school building fee increase. I understand I'll be outvoted for the third consecutive year, but I will renew that potentially next year. Thank you.
I'm all set, thank you for all the great comments, everything was very well said, thank you.
Yeah, I don't wanna belabor the night any longer, everybody, thank you for all of your comments. They were, they were very, very, we had a lot of very good thoughtful discussion and this has been a very difficult process and as Josh said, I'm praying that we have something happen between now and June twentieth and these, these teachers, you know, either they find other employment that's a good fit for them or something miraculously happens and we're able to do something different. But I know I can't say that with any certainty. So with that, a motion to adjourn? Seconded by Emily and we are adjourned at ten twenty-nine.